Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of July 11th. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as a whole.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to start off the meeting with a quick but extremely important piece of good news from our treasurer. Julie, could you share some information that you shared with me yesterday or the day before?
Sure. So, as part of our upcoming bond issue, we have a very thorough financial review by rating agencies. This year, we used S&amp;P. And so, the report came back after their review, and they affirmed the town's AA+ rating, which was great. They cited a few reasons why, and so, I'll just list off the kind of the top reasons. They say that we have a very strong economy, that there's strong management with good financial policies and practices, we have strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility with available fund balance, very strong liquidity, very strong debt and contingent liability profile, and a strong institutional framework. So, basically, we got an A report from our rating agencies, and that really speaks to our whole budget process and audit process and all of the hard decisions that the council and the administrator make and the department heads and all the work that they do. It's really across the whole town. So, they do a very thorough review on sort of all ends of government for us, and it was very nice to see.
Thank you, Julie. And thank you. Thank you. Julie mentioned department heads, but Julie is that department head that made a lot of that happen, so a little modest, and I'm going to call you out on that, saying you do a great job, and we're very lucky to have you. We're very lucky to have all of our department heads.
Excellent news.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start the meeting. I have to recuse myself from this meeting's consent agenda.
Okay.
Is there a second?
So, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is submission of minutes of previous meetings, items A, 1, and 2.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And now, we have item A3. This is an executive session of June 6, 2018, which is a sealed executive session minutes, and the motion would be to unseal the minutes and to approve if the council wishes to do so.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is a public hearing. The council will recall that a similar public hearing was scheduled for the last meeting, and there was a technical flaw in the advertising for that meeting. So, this is the, basically, for the alcoholic beverage license transfer of IFC Incorporated at 531 Wood Street requesting transfer to Sakuratani Ramen 531 Wood Street, and this is an advertised public hearing.
Okay. So, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? My goodness, we already have one to speak in favor. Welcome.
Good evening. Attorney Alfred Alriga Jr., on behalf of the applicant and petitioner. Just to reiterate, we were here the 13th of June, and there was a technical problem with the advertisement in that IFC Inc. had lost its charter, and their listing was not there because they didn't exist legally, but the Rhode Island Division of Taxation indicated it was necessary to give public notice of that effect. So, that's basically why we're here, and we are still working on some issues with Division of Tax, but I think we've resolved them and should be able to get letters of good standing by the end of the week. We're just asking that the council consider the petition, application, and referencing their minutes of the 13th, go along with the same hourly designations or how the new business would operate. Everyone's here. If there are any questions, the council may want to ask.
Is there any questions for Attorney Rega? No?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. What's this council's pleasure?
I move that we grant the Class BV liquor license to the Seker Ratani Ramen at 531 Wood Street according to all the ordinances in state code and town codes with the specified hours that were mutually agreed upon that were part of the--
I would suggest that perhaps to make it clear is to incorporate the conditions specified in the motion at the June 13 meeting.
So, part of my motion would be to reflect the minutes of the motion of the June 13 meeting according with everything that was outlined according with that motion.
Remind me, councilman, I don't recall. Did we put a timeframe for review? We typically do. It was on that?
We specified all the hours. We had a discussion with the applicant.
Perfect.
Redoing those hours. I think it was a minimal of a discussion of a half-hour difference in some cases.
Not that part of it, just the review time? Was it a three-month review, or? Remind me.
I don't think we had a specific time, but, you know, we'll remind the council that the application for renewal will be happening in November.
Thank you.
So, it's really, you're basically putting it in for a three-month review anyway.
So, will--
The time is 9:30.
Yep.
Friday through Thursday, and 10:30--
On Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
So, that was already included as we just specified.
That's the June 13 motion.
That's my motion.
Second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you. Good luck.
And that's great advertisement, all the T-shirts and coming here tonight as a group, so.
That is good advertising.
It is, yeah.
Thank you all. Mr. Clerk.
The next item is the public hearing on ordinance 2018-12. This is an amendment to the zoning code, which reacts to a request to allow a commercial or technical trade school in a limited business zone. You have a recommendation provided by the planning board in that they would approve this provided the council makes a condition that a special use permit would be required.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor? Please, welcome.
May I speak in favor of myself?
Sure.
My name is Susan Von Vilas. I am a registered nurse of 25 years. I have taught nursing assistants for 13, 14 years, as well as working with them in the community throughout my whole career as a home care nurse. It's probably no street in Bristol I haven't been on, I'll tell you that. I am suing, opening up the Walker School of Allied Health for CNA nursing assistant training programs, as well as CPR certification and training education center. Everything's ready to go. We're just waiting on your blessing, of course, for the building site. I'm working with the Small Business Association. I've been approved for all my loans. All the insurances are in place. Everything's ready to roll, and I think it's going to be a great asset to the community to educate, put people back to work, to re-educate, putting people to work, using a stepping stone for students to go on to nursing educations, as well as being able to take care of their own families and themselves and other people within the community.
That's excellent.
Yeah, thank you. Very excited.
Any questions?
No?
Knowing--
We're excited that you're here.
I just have a question.
Yes.
And we'll probably take this up, but just when you looked at the location for parking and the amount of clientele you are anticipating according with the hours in conjunction with the other businesses at this specified location, you see it as a good fit looking at other locations in the town as well, right?
I do, and this is the location for where I would prefer to be, being next door to the VA and the fire department, who I've spoken with and have an appointment coming up within the next week to be able to bump off of their CPR--
Great.
--professional license.
Great.
Classes will be 15 students max, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, nine to one, and then evening classes, 15 students max, five to nine, Monday, Wednesday, and then Tuesday, Thursday. We can bump up, and it's working with Mr. O'Brien, has been generous with, you know, his time and his efforts to, number one, wait for me to get in, and number two, to be able to, you know, arrange parking with the other tenants in the building so that we're all copastic, and I can bump up behind my students because we're all coming and going at the same time.
Okay, great.
And when's your opening date?
I would prefer to start classes September 10.
September 10, okay.
Diane, you wanted to add something?
Yes, I just want to make the council aware that this is a general ordinance amendment. You are not approving the application of the petitioner. This would just allow them to make application to the zoning board of review, which they have done in anticipation of this being approved tonight. They have a hearing scheduled with the zoning board. I believe it's July 16. So, I just want to make it clear to you and to petitioner that this is just to allow the zoning ordinance to be amended to give her the opportunity to make the application to us, and you have the planning board's recommendation, which is in support of the amendment as a special use permit in that zone, and that kind of speaks to what Councilman Stewart was asking. You know, there are some limited business zones that are more appropriate than others for uses like this, so this would give the zoning board the ability to review each one on a case-by-case basis.
Which is the distinction of a special use permit.
Correct.
So, it does not allow it--
By right.
By right. You must go in front of the zoning board.
And it's the same use, same permitted use in the general business zone. The general business zone is a little bit heavier zone, not a mixed-use zone like the limited business. So, we felt it was, you know, if you're requiring the special use permit in the heavier zone, it would make sense to apply it to the same in the limited business zone as well.
I just think that's an important distinction, because when I read it, you know, limited-- that it came across first as to amend the use table, and then it's to deny that, like, we don't want to change the whole zone, but just by special permit.
Correct.
You know? So, I think that's the way to go.
Yeah, so the petitioner applied to the board as, to allow it by right as a yes, so that's what the planning board was reacting to.
Right, right. No, I understand, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make that clear.
Yep, thank you.
No, it's a good way to do it.
Yeah, we take the supportive actions. That's why I wanted to ask you those questions. So, the anticipation and expectation of when you go in front of the zoning board, those are the criterias. That's why I asked, was there any backup plan, because, you know, this council and my colleague and our departments want to, and through, you know, economic coordination, they want to make it easy for you. But this also protects us as a town with our zones to make that amendment and leave it up to the zoning for a special use, because each case, it's a case-by-case scenario that we can interact with business owners that come in front of the town, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Questions? Also?
Thank you.
Can you want to add anything? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? I know this gets old, it's okay.
Motion to close.
It's going to get old, we're going to do it again. What's this council's pleasure?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to adopt the second reading.
Wait. I need a second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Please.
Motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
And Tim, can I ask that you include in that motion a finding that you incorporate and accept as your own all the recommendations of the planning board in letter to you from Diane Williamson dated June 20, 2018, and that you specifically find that the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the goals and purposes of zoning.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I have one thing. I've married, touched on it a little bit. In the future, when these are in front of us getting, we'll call it straightforward narrative, not that it was not straightforward, but just some bullet points of why, what the impetus was, and in fact, it was this, right? And it makes total sense, but why we're looking at this and how it affects. And that way, when we're sitting at home reviewing this before the meeting, we can go, okay, this makes sense to us, or it doesn't, so. So, you have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the Town Council, members of the Town Council, is the petition of Paul Denise doing business as Destiny's Diner, 20 Gooding Avenue, requests council consideration for additional operating hours. You have several recommendations from the town administrator and fire chief, Department of Water Pollution Control, and a late item, a recommendation from the chief of police to deny for reasons delineated.
Wait a second, I don't see that one. I don't see the police department.
It was one of the added? It is B3C.
Oh, I got it right here. Is this it?
So, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in favor? No? Okay. Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against? Is there anyone to speak against?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Chief, we got the recommendation to deny. Could you, we have it in front of us, but just for the record, could you share your thoughts on this, please?
Sure. I believe, as I spelt out in the memo, I think this would be a problematic situation to have a establishment open from that period until 4:00 AM. There's really, if anyone goes out there after 2:00 in the morning, there's minimal traffic in this community between midnight and 1:30 on a weekend. You have traffic coming from liquor establishments. There are a few places, Cumberland Farms for the seasons, which used to be the mini mart, at Gooding and Medicom, that if you need to get a coffee or a quick breakfast or something like that, I think you're able to get whatever you may need. However, I could tell you in the past, many years ago, when I first came on the police department, we had a couple of places in town that were open until 2:00 in the morning, Julie's Lunch and a few of those, and they were problematic back then. So, I, you know, if we had a freeway coming through where there was tractor-trailer drivers coming through and pulling into the place to get a breakfast or something like that, I could almost understand, but I see this being a hangout where you're going to have individuals leaving liquor establishments in town, looking for a place to eat, create some serious problems. In the past, we've had issues in that parking lot with loitering, with kids hanging around, squealing tires. We've had some serious motor vehicle accidents. Again, I don't see this being a positive thing for the north end of the town in that immediate area. I do believe that that would taxi the police department, fire and rescue. I'm not a betting guy, but they're going to be responding there more often than we want them to. So, I would not see a reason why we would grant such a license. I know the Denise family. I think they're great business people. You know, I don't go there, to be honest with you, very often. I've probably been there twice in my life, but I could tell you that my concern is that they're good business owners, but somebody walks in and offers them some good money, and you can't blame them. They sell it, and the next owner comes in, and now we have an issue with an absentee landlord where maybe they don't have their finger on the pulse. But at this point, I don't see this being a favorable thing for the community, and definitely not in that area. The other thing I remind you is we do have a couple of other breakfast shops here in town, and if you grant that one there, what's going to stop you, and I don't believe Mr. Rega would want that, but Vans down on Wood Street at State Street, you can just imagine if that was open until 4:00 in the morning in that neighborhood where you'd have people leaving a couple of liquor establishments, and then I think you'd have some serious problems with the neighbors being in here. You just looked at a place where they're opening a business on Wood Street, and we're trying to limit the hours of operation because of alcohol being consumed and, you know, people leaving there under the influence. I know that there's no alcohol being consumed or delivering there, but I think on a weekend that's what you're going to gather for clientele. That's my opinion of this.
Certainly, to the chief's remarks, I just want to reiterate that the Denise family is reputable. They have had their diner. They're very well-known here in town, so we're glad to have them. And this council, again, is pro-business, but I agree with every comment the chief had made here in our community, not so much like a metropolitan area where there's a lot of commercial 24-hour diners on commercial ways where you were talking traffic and whatnot. But most importantly, when the local establishments for the nightlife get out, our police force has to have a watchful eye and be out there. So, if something goes on in the wee hours of the morning when really it should be a downtime for our public safety, we have to be mindful of that so they can regroup and pay attention to the other things we got going on. So, in no way, I certainly understand why the Denises, they have a business. It's a diner. I don't blame them for asking for extra hours to help them out with their margin and whatnot. It's a good business plan, but for myself, I'm going to make a motion that upon the recommendations that we deny this petition.
I'm going to, I'll second that. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more, chief, and I just had, you know, we just had your recommendation here with us tonight, and I think you made a reference in there to not only local people, but just the East Bay. If you're the only place open in the East Bay and people traveling to come to this location, there's going to be lots of people who are on the road intoxicated, and I don't, I just don't think it's something that we need. When I saw the hours of 2:00 to 6:00, I couldn't believe my eyes. I mean, this was on the last agenda, you're going to get put off, I believe, and I was like, oh, my gosh, that's the last thing we probably need to address here in town right now, so.
And I apologize for not being late, but as you can imagine, we're just wrapping up for the fourth, so.
Oh, yeah. I'm busy.
Is there any other dialogue?
Just, chief, I do agree with your recommendation. I'm just curious, I don't know if the owner is here tonight, or anybody from Destiny's Diner is here. I was just curious to see if there is any sort of demand for this late of hours, just--
Mr. Denise, if you could come up to the microphone.
I have nothing to add. I respect his opinion. He's been around town, he knows what's going on, and I respect that.
Welcome.
Just something we're trying to do to, I mean, they're going to be out on the road anyway. There are people coming out of bars every day, and they're going to be out there. We just figured we'd give them a place to come and eat and sober them up a little and let them head home, but I respect your opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, certainly--
And I appreciate you guys listening.
No, we appreciate you having your business here, and, you know, it's these tough decisions that we hope you do understand.
Oh, I absolutely do.
From a whole perspective, on behalf of our community and the residents, not only the public safety factor, but just the precedent, we have other co-owners that are in your line of business, so we just got to be mindful of that and be foresightful of that, and that's what we try to be, so, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, from your point of view, I mean, it doesn't hurt to ask, and it's a good, you know, you'd be innovative, you'd be the only one, so you'd--
Well, yeah. I think if we're in a parking lot, no neighbors, nobody around, we wouldn't bother anybody, but, like I say, I totally understand and respect that. And I respect you folks for your opinions also.
We appreciate you as a business, and, you know, long and the short of it is, I wanted to understand the whole genesis of the why 4:00 AM and not 1:00 AM or 11 o'clock PM, so maybe--
Well, I think we're going to try to shoot for two. We'll try to put that in and see how that goes.
Yeah.
It's not for me, I'm not going to wake up that early. I already work enough. My daughter's got an interest in it, and, you know, I'm hoping that she'll do the right thing if we manage to do something, but definitely not for me, so. But again, I appreciate it, and we're going to try to put it in for 2:00 AM and see how that goes, and--
Well, we're always willing to work with you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And again, that's Destiny's Diner at 20 Gooding Avenue, Bristol.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other dialogue? No? Okay. So, we have a motion and a second to deny. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
The next section of the agenda is the ordinance section, and I'm assuming that the council wishes to take ordinance 2018-11 and 2018-13, which are related together. That would be items C1 and C3.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
This has to do with the, a new section for the town code that would deal with unruly gatherings and prohibit unruly parties.
So, based upon feedback that I received that was directed to me following the last meeting about this particular ordinance with regard to unruly individuals at rental houses, what we did is in C3, we made some changes that we're going to recommend to the council, and those changes are in bold, but I'll just briefly describe what they are so everyone's aware. The first change is that instead of actually putting a notice on the house in arrogance, you may recall they have the orange sticker, instead, we're going to furnish the notice to the owner and the tenants of the house, physically furnish them with it so that there's not going to be anything posted on the outside of the house. The second thing we did is we provide enhanced notice provisions so that everyone associated with that house is made aware of the fact that there's a problem there, and if, in fact, there are Roger Williams University students that happen to be living there, there's a provision that we will also let the university know so that they're aware that their students have been involved in an issue involving the town. Additionally, we've provided an explicit right of the property owner to contest the notice and set up a process whereby they get due process and that they can put on their cases to why, in fact, they shouldn't be determined to be an unruly house. So, those are the changes that are in bold from three. Assuming you like those changes, my recommendation is that on C1, which is the old notice, instead of adopting it for a second reading, you just receive and file that and make C3 the introduction of a new ordinance, because we've made substantial changes to it, and we'd want to have it as first reading this month, second reading at your next meeting in August.
So, we don't allow conversation on first readings, and the idea is to share with everyone that we're going to be speaking about something, and at the next meeting, then we speak about it, so it gives people an opportunity to be part of the discussion if they so choose to be. Now, because we have a second reading here on an ordinance that's almost identical, but there's some substantive change, but it's, but the key points, in my opinion, are still there, and it is a second reading. I understand there was a few people that wanted to share their thoughts on this. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Alicia Sekiro. I live down in Hopeworth Estates. I'm here representing a lot of my neighbors that came today to support me, so I prepared a statement so that I could have the opportunity to say what we want to say. I have two young children, they're age four and seven. My husband, Josh, is their generation down in Hopeworth. We bought our house in 2011 and have seen the behavior of our neighbors and their visitors continue to escalate. We've seen multiple instances of public urination, college guys urinating from the neighboring We've seen multiple instances of public urination, college guys urinating from the neighboring porch while my kids were playing outside, a guy urinating on trees across the street while sitting down to dinner out my bay window, groups of girls urinating on our front lawn, repeated parties waking us up at night, even on school nights, groups of kids partying on our front lawn, beer cans and trash continuously littering our lawn, groups of drunk, loud kids leaving our neighborhood beach with open alcohol containers. And last year, I had even one kid break into my car, he had slept in it, drained my car battery, broke my sunglasses, he vomited on the interior of my driver's side door, and we found human feces behind my car in the street. This incident last year was what prompted me to ask Nathan for the town's help. My neighbors have reported multiple instances of their children being approached by college kids attempting to start fights. My high school neighbor was approached one night when just parking on the side of her own house, being yelled at. There have been continuous parties on one of the roofs of one of the rentals in our neighborhood, neighborhood children almost being hit by cars, by drunk kids coming and going from daytime parties, drunk kids hanging out of car windows yelling obscenities while neighborhood children were playing at the park. One car stopped one day, pulled over, and someone vomited right next door to where children were playing in their front yard. We've had beer bottles thrown on the roofs of people's homes, waking them up out of a sound sleep. And one elderly gentleman in my neighborhood even reported waking up in the middle of the night to find that a kid had broken into his house and was just sitting on his living room chair. These kids have been slowly taking over our neighborhood, partying on our personal properties and private beach, and disturbing the residents of Hopeworth, to the point that families are now deterred from letting their children play outside, or from enjoying public shared property, including our park and beach. We're concerned for the state of our family neighborhood and the state of our children, safety of our children, and are currently in the process of reviewing and updating our own association bylaws, as hoping that we'll be able to control that on a neighborhood level. I personally have continued to be fearful for my own and my children's safety when there are dozens to hundreds of drunk college kids congregating around my house day and night, and I sometimes fear more serious retaliation from these students if I were to attempt to politely request that they disperse. We've had them talk back and yell at us when we've asked them politely to just leave our property. We had a group of girls one night come and urinate on our lawn in retaliation of our request for them to disperse. This fear has been expressed by multiple other residents in town as well. A few people have even said that they fear retaliation so strongly from these students that many of them have been afraid to call the police, and have been suffering in silence and sitting in fear like hostages in their own home in town. Many of my elderly neighbors have also expressed a worsening fear lately, questioning the possibility of severe retaliation from these drunk students, given their age and the fact that they live alone. While our neighborhood and families and children are our main concern, the landlords should also be concerned about the liability from these students being allowed to continuously put their own safety in jeopardy on their property, like being drunk up on a roof. They should also ultimately be held responsible for the behavior of the tenants that they allow to live on their property. Right now, there isn't even any policy in place or requirement for the landlord to be notified of this behavior, to try to have conversations with their tenants to prevent it from continuing. Landlords that don't live near their rented homes don't even have any idea that this activity is happening, let alone the potential liability at stake with these kids putting their lives in danger on their property. And if they do know, there's no reason why they should even care, there's no consequence for them continuing to rent to these obnoxious students. Many landlords have even suggested that we call the police as a solution to the problem, which they continue to respond and break up the parties, and there's been no actual pressure put on the tenants and the landlords to actually take responsibility for all of the ongoing behavior. I recently reached out with an online petition to ask for more support from people in town. I've heard lots of stories from people in town, including more trespassing, harassment, destruction of property, public urination, breaking and entering, just blatant verbal disrespect. As it seems, you know, there seems to definitely be a couple different areas in town where this stuff is happening. I have a copy of the petition and some other signatures that I've gotten just on paper. There are over 300 signatures from people in town in support of what I'm here speaking This issue seems to be getting worse, and why wouldn't it? These kids want to live off campus, where there are no enforced rules, they think they're invincible, the landlords just want to keep making more money at our expense. We had one Roger Williams alumni actually report that students are often bragging about having crazy parties and not getting into any serious trouble, and that they think that the Bristol Police and the town itself is a joke. We even had a neighborhood renter actually say that it isn't their responsibility if people that they invite over get out of control, blaming the ongoing activity on us as neighbors for not being more respectful of them, that maybe if we had more conversations with them, that they wouldn't be participating in this behavior and disrespecting us. Obviously, everyone can have a few friends over, but there has to be a line drawn and laws to enforce the permanent residence of this town. These students are here to learn, not continuously disrupt the lives of everyone surrounding them. Currently, all that I know that we have in place is a $500 fine for two noise disturbances in a 12-month period. These landlords are making $1,000 every month renting to these college kids. This $500 fine is a drop in the bucket for these people. I know that my direct neighbors have been continuously expected to pay the fine as renters, based on the landlord's request, which split four to five ways, is a minimal fine and a minor slap on the wrist. There is currently no successive punishment for continued violations of the noise ordinance, no actual serious ramifications for these renters and landlords for ongoing nuisance behavior, and no real severe ordinance in place to deter this activity from happening in the first place. The police continue to respond to the complaints, break up the party, and there's clearly nothing really holding anybody accountable for this ongoing behavior. We understand as a community that we obviously can't control who rents from these landlords, but we're asking that the town put in place more strict ordinances, fines, and a progressive violation system to help control this behavior. If the renters are threatened with a more severe punishment, the hope is that it would actually make these people think twice, prevent them from exposing our children to safety risks, and prevent them from participating in this type of rowdy behavior in the first place. Also, ultimately, the landlords need to start being held accountable for their tenants and the behaviors that they allow on their rented properties. People are moving because they can't take it anymore. My family and I have even considered it. It's become absolutely exhausting trying to justify and explain this ongoing behavior to my children, as there's no respectable justification for any of it. Bristol has the reputation for being a safe family town, let's make these students start respecting it as such. Our town is supposed to be a safe and wonderful place to raise children. And I also, I do want to take the opportunity, while I have your attention, to personally thank Nathan for, you know, being receptive and helping me, and with how quickly this kind of seemed to come together, as we're now approaching a new school year. So I just want to say, thank you.
You're welcome. This is a unified effort. There's a lot of, a lot of conversations that happened with the solicitor, with the police chief. My colleagues and I, in government and sitting here, all want these things to be better. I should be, I don't want to suggest that this is a silver bullet, because it is not, but I do believe that steps like this will help us go down the right path. As I mentioned, when we first brought this out, I reached out to Narragansett. In fact, I was there over the weekend and talking to a couple of residents. But I spoke to the manager, the town manager there, and he said that this has worked wonderful for them. The reason why it was suggested that we have another first reading, we remove the sticker, was that some feedback that I'd gotten through multiple sources that said that maybe that's not what we need for Bristol, the sticker didn't seem to help us do anything else. So I didn't want to, it didn't seem like that was the fight we wanted to have, but we want to make sure, and my colleagues want to make sure, that whatever we put in place is enforceable, and obviously, the police chief wants to make sure it's enforceable. That's why we've had so many conversations with him. No one thinks that what's going on is okay. I wanted to speak really quick on the $500. I asked our solicitor, why not $1,000? Why not $1,500? Why not step it up? State law, municipalities can charge up to $500. If we go more than that, then it goes, Mike, would you help me with it? Goes to Superior Court, is that at that point?
The idea, the reason this works so well in Narragansett, which is what we modeled our ordinance for, is because when you go to municipal court, and we have one here, it can be dealt with immediately. Go to Superior Court, you could be looking at two, three, four years. It's just pure craziness. So what we did, in addition to the $500 fines, is we added severe community service requirements. For a second offense, 25 hours; for a third offense, 50 hours. That will scare people more than the $500 fine, because that has to be done, it's court-ordered. If you don't do it, you get held in contempt and potentially can wind up in jail eventually. So the other good thing about this is it's already been tested in the court system. The ACLU did challenge this similar ordinance in Narragansett in federal court, it was upheld. So we know we have an ordinance that is going to be effective, it's going to work, and we're going to be able to implement it in our own court, so we'll get immediate action. So for instance, assuming the council adopts this at its August 1st meeting, then we're going to be ready in September. And as soon as these incidents get reported to the police department, we'll begin charging them and prosecuting them.
I should also add that I reached out to Pete Wilber from the university. As most or all of you know, the president passed away, and he could not be here this evening. But I did ask if he or representation from the university could be at our next meeting, and I've asked for their public input on what they're, how they're going to dovetail this on their end of things. It's been, if I keep pointing at the chief, we've had a lot of conversations about this. He in particular has said this multiple times, is that it needs to come from their end, too.
We haven't had a very supportive response from contacting the university in the past, not just myself, but I know a lot of my neighbors haven't had, you know, who we've been speaking, it hasn't been Pete Wilber, but who we've been speaking to at the university, hasn't been, hasn't been very understanding.
We're hoping that's going to change on this particular topic, as in my initial conversations with Peter, it sounded that way. They want to be part of the solution, is what Peter said to me. So, and I have a long relationship, and so do others, with Peter, and I've found him to be nothing but a gentleman.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Just about the ordinance, to make sure that I understand it correctly. With the new changes that you have, is it going to fine each individual person and the landlord, the $500? So the landlords are going to be required to pay, plus each individual tenant?
So the fine right now is against the owner of the household, and the tenants would be the ones subject to the community service. So that's how it would work.
So...
And if there's disorderly conduct charges with regard to the individual, whether they're students or not, they're going to be in district court facing different fines and different consequences. So this is a civil ordinance, where we go after the landlord and the tenants with fines and community service. If the police find that there's anything from underage drinking to disorderly conduct, they will also be charged in addition to this civil ordinance with criminal misdemeanor violations in district court.
So we had, my neighbor Amy and I were discussing, we had a party in our neighborhood on July 3rd. That's probably a perfect example of the current problem that we have. We know, we know the landlord, the house right next door to me is co-owned by two different parties. The people who live in the neighborhood, we obviously speak to, because they're our neighbors. So we know that they have had conversations with their tenants about having a party. The history of the house, how it's been a problem, it's a problem in the neighborhood, neighbors aren't happy. So they were warned, they left us, we weren't, me and my family weren't home, they left us a little note under a rock on our doorstep that said, we're gonna, we know that there's been a problem, but we're going to have a small party anyway. Here's my phone number, we know you have young kids, let us know if the music gets too loud. So, and we were away, we weren't even at home. My neighbors have filled me in on the whole rest of the story. Well, they invited their 15 people over, it turned into 100. They were all over my property. It basically was like the rental was completely trashed, like someone took a dumpster, emptied trash out, and they were trespassing all over my property. They tried stealing from our neighborhood party that was set up at the park. They were trying to steal red solo cups, because obviously, they didn't have enough. And at the end of the day, the other landlord who doesn't live in our neighborhood showed up, and was telling them they violated the terms of their lease, and there's nothing that's happened to anybody involved. The, one of the responding officers that day, I mean, I had a neighbor basically begging them to punish somebody, hold somebody accountable for this, can't you get them for underage drinking? And the responding officer himself even said that showing up that day, I mean, when they're responding to calls like this, that their main priority is just to disperse the people. We're not possibly going to card everyone, we're not going to arrest everyone that we're sending away drunk for DUI, our main goal is to disperse the people. So if they're, if...
I'm sorry.
I just, I mean, it's a concern to me.
You were hearing Mary was making that...
Yeah, I just, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't know where that was coming from.
I, I think you did a great job explaining your position, and it's so disgusting, and it's so annoying and disgusting all the way around. And I'm not sure this is strong enough either, but there's a couple of things that I, so I wanted to ask, because the same thing that Nathan just referenced, and I guess the answer is municipal court, is the $500. And like you'd mentioned, the progressive, so is it just $500 every time you go down there?
Yes.
So, but can't you charge every single person who's involved, or everybody who's at least a leasing? I mean, the problem I think you run into in some of these houses is that, you know, it goes on Face, you got, you got somebody having a party, and maybe only one or two kids are actually on the lease, and then, and then it goes on Facebook, and everybody comes, I mean, I've seen it, there's like a party house right up here, and they're on top of the roof, and they're on top of everything else, not quite as bad as in your neighborhood, though, on a regular basis. And why can't at least a leasing, or multiple people, in addition to the owner, get the fine? And that's one of my questions. The other is, I know I brought this up before, and you told me, I mean, you told me it's not a good idea, but why can't the insurance company, like you have the list of people who's going on here, why can't we just send a copy to the insurance company for that home as well? Because it seems to me, and everybody says, well, the insurance company just wants the money. It seems to me that if they're getting regular notices, that there's dangerous things going on in their house, they might drop that customer, number one. And also, I think the parents of the kids who live there, because they may not care. A lot of times, I've seen it from my own experience of, or my family's experience of just not party house, but just renting to people, they're like, you know, everybody swears their kid's the perfect kid until there's a problem, and then nobody wants to hear it. But, like, why can't we send it to the parents, the insurance company, in addition to the whole list of other people that you have referenced here? I mean, those are just a couple of my thoughts.
So let me respond. Between now and the next reading, let me take a look at making a further adjustment with regard to who we can actually charge with the, or assess the penalty against. Is it maybe possible to change this a bit without having to go through yet another first reading?
Amendment, yeah.
With regard to that. Concerning the parents, no one will want to hear this, but once you're 18, you're an adult, and we're not allowed to do that. I believe not a school or a college can't even tell the parents what their children's grades are unless the child signs off and allows that, so we can't do that. With regard to insurance company, I don't think that would be a problem, other than knowing who the insurance company is. So there's, unlike a mortgage, which is public, and you can go the way on evidence records and see which bank is on record, there is no record of insurance companies, and I don't think administratively, I don't know how in the world that would work. But let's work on, on the fact that anyone who's on that lease...
I like that.
Going after them with the fine, so it's not just the owner, but it's the tenants also.
Because the owners aren't going to care. If they're charging $1,000 for, you know, and they're making $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 a month, they're not going to care. And if they live out of state, and unfortunately, much to my chagrin, in shock, you know, some of this is owned by local people. And that really, really, you know, I can't tell you how disheartening I found that to be, and...
Just another bit of positive news. I actually represent a homeowners group in Narragansett called Eastwood Look. It's, they deal with the URI students in exactly the same way that you're dealing with the Roger Williams students. And this homeowners association was at the end of its, they were, they, at the end of the rope, whatever phrase you want to use, just like you and your neighbors are. When this ordinance got adopted in Narragansett, I agree with Councilor Kolor, it's not a silver bullet, but boy, it made a difference. So I am hopeful that, like in Narragansett, once this is in place and word gets around that the town of Bristol is prosecuting under this ordinance, that things will change, both with the landlords, the tenants, et cetera. Again, no guarantees, no promises, I can only give you what has happened with URI students and the progress that was made there, once they got through all the court battles on this ordinance. Which, again, good for Bristol, we're through the court battles, we know that this is going to be enforceable.
Can I ask just one other quick question, and I think I mentioned this to the chief at one point. I mean, especially if you say it's happening during the days, you know, the parties during the day, like, why can't we just do, like, even if it's undercover, like, just alcohol, like, you know, like cars down there, and going after kids who are, people who are drinking and driving? Like, I don't know why, I think, I know at night sometimes, the issue, especially when it's sort of scattered around town, that, like, I think you told me, a lot of people take Ubers and so forth and so on, that they're not going to be driving. And I think part of the problem is that a lot of these people, and I'm not saying about yours, they're just other ones that I'm familiar with, are smart enough to know that, like, they can be, all this obnoxiousness, but unless the police can catch them in the act, then there's nothing they can do about it. And I think that's the other problem, because they can do whatever, but then, when the police come, finally, you know, when the police get there, they're like little angels, just, oh, we weren't outside, you know? And, but I mean, if there's something we can do, because, I mean, we really don't want to encourage these people drinking and driving, and just being drunk all around these neighborhoods. And some of the stuff that you explained, it's just disgusting, and there's young children playing in these areas...
That's been in the last couple months, I mean, since...
You know, just like the vomiting and...
The most recent stuff. That's not even everything that we've seen, and my kids have seen, and, you know...
I mean, you want to go out and play, I mean, you worry about, like, where the dog may have done something, and now you're talking about humans doing things on the lawn. That's, it's just disgusting, and I don't understand, like, you know, there's lots of good kids in college, but then how do you get this group of people that are just so disrespectful to their neighbors and to a community, and that there are no consequences? And I believe there needs to be some from the college. And I believe there needs to be some from the college, you know, any of the universities involved. So, I mean, okay, I'll let you, I'll let you speak, Chief, about that.
As, I think the chairman could tell you, we've had numerous meetings with the university. They're definitely part of this equation.
No, I'm talking about the drunk, drunk driving part, yeah.
Right. But I'll get back to the drunk driving part of it. I think that, you know, it becomes frustrating for the neighbors, it becomes frustrating for the police. However, as I had mentioned more than once, the university needs to be involved in this. We have gone as far as inviting them and calling them when there's a need for the police to respond to a house party, just to have their public safety there, their dean of students, whoever it may be, because they have a lot more leverage when these students are back on campus. And contacting the parents for code of conduct doesn't mean that they're gonna tell them that, you know, they're involved in underage drinking, as the solicitor said, but there are certain things that they can do that, you know, they haven't been able to step up to the plate. But I think we're heading in the right direction. I don't think it's falling on complete deaf ears from the last two or three conversations we've had. We've logged it in the computer, in our computer system, that they've been notified, and either they're refusing to respond or they will show up there. And at that point, they have their eyes and ears on what's going on there, so there'll be no question of denying any of this. As far as everything else that's taken place there, I could tell you that the police department responds immediately when we receive a call. You know, I'm a little disappointed that we have some elderly people that may feel that they're intimidated, because that's the last thing we're gonna allow, starting with me, any resident to be intimidated by anyone, never mind a college student.
I've waited personally over 45 minutes for the police to show up and disperse people.
Yeah.
I've, I mean, the most reason, I don't know if that was like May 5th, but I mean, I had, I called twice, I was watching them stand outside my yard, my husband was working that night, I'm home alone with two, two young kids, I don't dare open my window or door and yell at people, so.
Well, I'll go back and look at that. You're saying it took 45 minutes to respond to the call. Usually it doesn't take 45 minutes, usually we're at a call within a few minutes, but I...
No, that wasn't, I forget when that was. That was Cinco de Mayo, yeah, it was May 5th.
Okay. We put additional manpower on, as you know, but that is, the goal is for us to respond and immediately take control of the situation. That you, you know, the officer wasn't lying to you, if there's 150 students and there's three officers there, we're trying to get these people in a very orderly manner to disperse and to do what we need to do.
It's not, and I, we understand that that's not, it's absolutely not realistic to expect that that, every single, you know what I mean? You're not gonna like line everybody up and...
But if we, if we have a reason to arrest one or two people, I can assure you, they will be arrested for whether it's underage drinking, urinating in public, or whatever it may be. So I, I think what we need to do is to continue moving forward with this. I ask that they continue to call us. If there's a resident, an elderly person or something, they need to call us, they really do. And when we know of a house party, believe me, we're responding sometimes ahead of time. We'll, you know, we'll park a police car outside, you know, maybe not right in front of the house, but at the corner of the street. So they start getting the message, but we need to receive the information too. You know, the community's good size here and there are times that we may only have three or four officers, and we're gonna respond to every call that's forwarded to us. But I can tell you, it's not for lack of trying, but I will tell you that we're gonna continue to do what we need to do. This isn't something that, you know, we're gonna resolve overnight, but I think with the right people being involved, we may be able to gain some ground. As the solicitor said, Narragansett's had some cess with, with that ordinance, so we're gonna continue to do that. We usually go in and try to identify who's responsible for the party, whether it's at the beginning or at the end, as they move along. And our goal would be to, to start holding the landlords, the tenants, I think I said this at the last meeting, but we discussed this, the landlords, the tenants, and the university has, has to be part of this equation. So we will continue to do that. To get back to your answer, to your question, the answer to that, Mary, with regards to the drinking and driving, you have to have probable cause to stop someone. Just because they're driving away from a home, unless they're stumbling and everything else, then we shouldn't even be allowing them to get into a vehicle. They have to violate some motor vehicle, they have to violate some motor vehicle law in order for us to stop them. And I assure you, when they do, whether it's speeding, stop signs or whatever, they're gonna be stopped, and if there's a reason to arrest them for drunk driving, we will, we wouldn't hesitate to do that. So again, I'm gonna ask that you continue to call us, okay? I'm gonna go back and check the May 5th log. Any other time, is there any other time that it's taken that long to respond to the call there?
July 3rd, but we have some obvious day.
July 3rd? Yeah.
But was that May 5th, was that like at night, like late, like after the bar, when the bars would be getting out?
It was after midnight.
See, I think what, I think the police were probably trying to get the bars.
I think there may have been an emergency or something, that I don't know what possibly could have happened, but...
They're also trying to close everything up down here, and if they're all moving up, because I, I live not too far from here, so I see the kids, I hear them, they're all coming up, they're going to the next place that's still open till maybe like, you know, a little bit later. And they're going to continue their parties, you know, wherever, and I think that's the, and it's, and it's tough, it's tough to get them. I do think one of the things that I think it probably would be a great concession, I mean, we all talk about wanting to get more money from the university, I think if we could get them and their security people to go with you at these house party calls, to meet you there or to ride with you on some of these nights that we know this is gonna go on, and, I mean, and that would be one of the best concessions, to see it, because these kids, when they realize they're not gonna graduate, if this stuff isn't all taken care of, and they continue to act that way, that's the only time you're gonna get a reaction from them and their parents.
Well, I believe you probably have mental telepathy, because I think I've said that half a dozen times with the chairman there, the vice chair, this president town administrator, the former town administrator, everyone in the same room discussing that. So it, it hasn't been for lack of trying, that's why I think we're at the point where I've put them on notice, that we're actually logging it in the computer, okay? That we've notified them and they either are not available to respond or they have some other excuse, which, you know, it's not acceptable as far as I'm concerned. So again, it's not for lack of trying, we're gonna continue to do that. The only thing else I'll share with you is anytime that someone wants to call the police department, they don't have to give their name, they could if they'd like. It's not like we're gonna announce it, they can contact us anonymous and just give us a location. We're gonna respond, I can assure you that. You know, maybe I don't have the number, but out of 50 calls that maybe we got in that neighborhood, twice we weren't there, you know, properly, but understand that those two days, and I'm not making any excuses, those are days that were kind of stretched very thin, but I assure you that if, you know, there's someone being threatened, someone's in any type of danger, we're gonna respond. If I have to respond from my own home, we will definitely be there. So please, forward it to your neighbors. I will tell you that we're gonna, right at the beginning of the school year, we also hook up with the university and we go to door to door, okay?
We know about that.
That our potty houses or houses of concern. So I assure you that that will be the first or second home that we will be visiting this year.
That house is on the list.
And I've, I've actually spoke to the sergeant that handles that, and the thing is, we're gonna be moving forward, and I was gonna contact the solicitor to notify the owner also, because we usually knock on the door, introduce ourselves, this is Officer so-and-so, he will more than likely be the officer that'll be responding, he's the officer in charge, he has a face, a voice that you need to understand, that will be here, and someone from the university who we're, we're going to contact and hopefully bring into it. We notify the people living there, the tenants. I'm gonna try to take one step further. You gotta understand, some of these tenant, landlords, as you said, are not always the most cooperative people, but I don't really take it personal if they think I'm harassing them, which I'm not. I just want them to know and be put on notice that we've notified their tenants and we'd like to notify them of our concerns. And at the same time, we'll let them know that there will be consequences with the action of any resident leaving, living there. So we're gonna take that extra step. So again, it won't be for lack of trying, I'm giving you no false hope or promises, but I can tell you that we will be there in force, and if they violate the law, with all due respect, they will be held accountable. And if need be, they will be arrested.
Mr. Chairman, I know we're gonna have further dialogue the next meeting pertaining to this with the, the ordinance. Just real quickly, thank you, Mr. Kiro, for your statement, representing all your residents in that neighborhood. I don't think, not only your neighborhood, but every neighborhood through the town of Bristol should have to experience any of this for public welfare and their families. So certainly, we have to treat this and be paramount and put it first and foremost. Very proud of our police department, but I know with the ordinance, once it takes effect, I know in the past, there's a lot of landlords that don't even live in Bristol. And my concern is, when we go after the landlord, because this has happened, is we can't track the landlord down. All of a sudden, the landlord can't be found. We have to make it a primary intent to track down that landlord so we can have the conversation as soon as possible. So again, on behalf of myself and this council, to any family out there, you shouldn't have to experience this in a town of Bristol. With that, I make a motion to receive and file C1, and also make a motion that this constitutes the first reading of C3.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second discussion?
I just have a quick discussion. Thank you very much for your passionate speech, Mr. Kiro. I also grew up in Hopeboro, so I'm shocked to hear what's going on down there, and I'm glad we're taking steps to rectify it. And I think this goes a long way. Mike, I do have a question on Section A, really quickly, and maybe you can explain it, but constitutes a, let's see, what constitutes a significant segment of the neighborhood in Section A? And I'm just curious if we may need to put some definitions around this ordinance in regards to what that means. Does that mean just one street over is a significant amount of the neighborhood? I'm just trying to close the loopholes on it.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay. And the, and the other thing I wanted to know is, as far as definition is unlawful conduct, maybe we list what that, maybe a little bit of definition of what that means? I'm just thinking if, if anybody had to come back and try to find a loophole on that, but we can talk offline on that as well.
Could I just ask, you know, to Ed's point, I mean, if you can't track down the, the property owner, is there a way to like put a lien on their property or do something, even if it's a, a small, for a small amount? Just something that gets their attention?
That's, when we discussed that, no, no, I wanted a lien, but it's a state law of how far you can go with this.
No, 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 no. If in fact a fine's assessed, and if in fact it's not paid after notice is given, absolutely, we can, we can ask the judge to hold the person in contempt and allow us to place a lien. So yeah, we can ask for that.
Okay. That, that's all I had, thank you.
Anything else?
I just have one quick question. My name's Brian Clark, I live at 4 Evelyn Drive.
Welcome.
From my experience, the police have been fantastic. We call them, they come, they disperse. So I have, I don't, I don't wanna get into everything that's been talked about, but one thing I think that we're missing is the ordinance is four unrelated parties can live in one dwelling. Okay? We have, across the street from me, the owners are in Maine, there's always six students in the house. I've gone down to the zoning official, I filed with the compliance officer, and they send out a zoning violation certificate, but nothing, there's no teeth with that. Okay? But there's a lot of money at 800 bucks a kid per bedroom to get that fourth and fifth kid in there, you know what I mean? So I just would ask you to maybe, as part of this, kinda direct and look into that as well, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So we have a motion, you heard the motion to receive and file, and then first reading for C3, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you could also please ask Ms. Kiro if she intends to leave that petition with us? I don't have any documents.
We have it.
We have it, okay.
Sergeant of Arms.
Sergeant Arms. And all-around smiley guy, so. Thank you.
Okay, just a little backpedaling at this point, because now we're back to C2, and this is ordinance 2018-12. This is a second reading for adoption, which would to, be to allow the technical or trade schools in the limited business zone, I think it'd be best to, to vote on it formally in this spot, even though you did under the public hearing section.
Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve C2 for adoption.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure with Diane that this is the correct, let me...
Limited business.
Like, I know, but it's by a special use permit, is this the right language?
This would be to incorporate the special use permit.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure that's correct.
Okay. So we're comfortable with that?
Is that right?
It's definitely a special use permit.
Perfect.
As presented in our documentation, for all the table uses that are required for a special use permit.
Okay, second.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item D3, and this is the petition of William Mitchell on behalf of Bristol County Elks, 1 Constitution Street, requests council consideration for dancing and entertainment license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, and chief of police to approve with certain conditions.
Motion to approve the dancing and entertainment license?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I actually had a couple of questions. Full disclosure, I'm an Elk, and I'm happy that I'm an Elk. My colleague, Mr. Stewart, is also an Elk, and he reached out to the solicitor. I share this, because we don't know if we need to recuse ourselves to, to vote on this, but the solicitor said no, because we're not officers.
I just want to introduce myself. I'm Bill Mitchell, I'm the exalted ruler of the Elks.
Welcome.
I live here in Bristol at 10 House Street. I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have. I think it's kind of a clear-cut thing that we're, we're talking about here, so if you have any questions, that's why I'm here.
I do. On the application, in our application, the clerk, Mr. Clerk and I spoke about this for a little bit, our application doesn't actually ask you for hours, but I would like, and I know this council would, know the hours of operation that the, this dancing and entertainment license...
Okay, the majority of music we have is on a Saturday night, 7:30 to 11:00 indoors. Occasionally, we'll be outdoor on the deck, and it'll be like 1:00 to 4:00, 1:00 to 5:00.
Okay.
Okay, is that something that we can put in as a restriction? Or, like, in other words, like, if it's outside in the summer, or the falls, when you'd be having the outdoors spring, that it, and by say 7:00, you know, not start before 1:00 and end by 7:00 PM, something like that?
I don't think that's a problem, but you are the decision makers, so whatever you decide.
I mean, you know, and then like if we said the indoors, that it would be from, you know, 7:00 to 11:00 PM on weekend nights only? Is that something that you could live with?
Yeah. Yeah, I can't think of any time, other than maybe a holiday, the night before the 4th or something, where we've had something.
Oh, you can't...
Cover Sunday.
It doesn't cover Sunday, right, 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 right.
Yeah, that's, I don't want to speak on behalf of Mr. Mitchell, but the majority, I believe, is acoustic or duets inside.
Yeah, I mean, once in a while, we might have a trio.
For a special luau or outside event during the summer, you might bring the music outside, but it's not in, in a repetitious way where it's every night and every week that it's outside, so.
Well, especially like, well, and there's nice weather, I mean, it's nice to have like a little...
Are we comfortable with the hours?
I would be comfortable just putting the restrictions on the hours, like even to 11:30 or 11:00, 11:30.
Indoors.
Indoors, yeah.
And then, no later than, no earlier than 1:00, no later than 7:00, and outdoors.
Yeah.
I can, we can live with that, absolutely.
I would be comfortable with Councilwoman Perella's agenda, just to square all these dancing and entertainment licenses off.
Yeah. Let's get the state to change that. If we have a council, we have a legislative candidate here, so that is like a, something that maybe he could work on, if he wins.
Can I just have a clearer definition on the restrictions for hours?
Yeah.
So, on?
No later than 11:30?
Inside.
Interior.
No later than 7:00 outside. No earlier than 1:00 outside. Did I miss anything?
No.
Okay.
So, you're not going 9:00 PM to 4:00 AM, right?
This is in New York City.
That's a great response, sir. That's a great response. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have a motion on that? I'm sorry. We did, and we had a second?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. Is there any other dialogue? I will say that the Elks, and I'm not there very often, so I don't include myself in this, do really wonderful work down there and everywhere.
Thank you.
So, congratulations to you, you've been a good neighbor. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is a request for one-day dancing and entertainment license for the Newport Music Festival. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, and Chief of Police to approve.
Motion to approve with all the recommendations for the date specified for the one-day dancing and entertainment license.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item E1. These are the private investigator license renewals for 2018-19. You have a recommendation of the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve.
Motion to approve as stated.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item F1. This is the petition of John Brando to Milford Street, request town reimbursement for sewer tie-ins relating to 6 Milford Street. You have a recommendation of the Town Administrator and Superintendent of Water Pushing Control to approve.
So, Mr. Solicitor, I know that we spoke about this a little bit. Could you share our conversation?
Absolutely. There's no question that there's an agreement in place that's enforceable, that this gentleman paid the full cost of bringing the sewer line in, in pursuant to the agreement, whenever anyone utilizes that line, they have to contribute what the town does collect. It is also my further understanding that we collect that fee over a period of 10 years. Any reimbursement, which I would recommend that you do approve the reimbursement, it's as we collect the annual portion of the $2,600 that we remit it to this gentleman.
Have we collected?
We've only collected one.
One of the 10 years, right? Am I correct?
302 or 304 dollars. So, I think what the motion should be is to approve the reimbursement as the town collects the fee.
Now, why wouldn't we just, I mean, that may be the only way we can do it right now, but it doesn't happen very often, so why wouldn't we just pay him and then just not have to get into, like, making sure he's getting a $300 check every year, or something?
Other than the fact that, yeah, we'd be fronting the money. We're working on, it's just about finished, actually, a totally revised sewer ordinance and sewer impact, and this will not be a problem going forward. I think this is a rare problem that's come up once or twice in the last 10 years or so.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Solicitor, and to your point, Councilwoman Per, the, I mean, that agreement is a unique agreement, and it, and we have to abide by it, reading it, but also, I think, by the wording, we're taking the steps in accordance with that agreement on behalf of the town to collect and then reimburse the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, to change that would be not going by the agreement, and we would have to change the wording of that agreement.
I just think.
I know it would be a good hot intent, but I just want to make sure if we did go down that road, we wouldn't be doing anything outside the agreement. You know what I mean?
I think it makes sense. It's a dollar-for-dollar reimbursement. As we get the money, we just turn it over.
All right. Just a question.
Motion to reimburse the sewer tie-in.
Second.
Based on all the approvals.
Second.
And recommendation of the Solicitor.
And recommendations of the Solicitor.
Perfect. And there's a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item F2. This is the petition of Louis Fratorelli, Chairman of the Bristol, of the Harbor Festival Committee, request permission to serve and sell alcoholic beverages at Rockwell Park for the 5th Annual Bristol Harbor Festival Event to be held on August 18, 2018. You have recommendations provided by the Town Administrator, Fire Chief, the Department of Public Works, and also the Chief of Police to approve with certain conditions.
Make a motion that we approve this upon all the recommendations confined in all the ordinances and all the riders and assurances that are necessary for liability, and wish them much continued success on this 5th year that they have been doing this for the community. So, that's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion?
I just had one quick question, and that is, I was looking at this, and also, you know, the flyer that you have out, or I'm going to see it online somewhere. You're still doing, it wasn't clear to me, are you doing two seedings of the clam boil or just one? It said five to seven. Are you still doing five and seven?
No, no, ma'am. For disclosure, though, I am not Lou, I am David Gerton.
Okay.
Lou couldn't make it this evening.
Yes, I know Lou, and you're not Lou, so.
But I am David. This year, we're having one sitting.
Okay, that's the way it read to me. Okay, so one sitting?
Yes, that is a minor change.
Is that any time between those times that you could pop in?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, I have to say, this is the best deal in town, and it's the best clam, Little Neck Boil, that, it's like such a great event, and I can't believe it's been five years already.
I sat across from you about three years ago, and I know you had a good time.
I'm glad, I'm glad she specified that for the audience, because that's why I read it, also, like, reading that there were two seedings, so.
And we thank you for your support.
So, Mr. Gerton, when, this is on August 18?
Correct.
So, what day is that, and what time is that for everyone, again?
It's from, it is from 1:30 to 7:00 PM. It starts off with the blessing of the fleet. There are games and activities for the kids. There are various musicians, mostly folk musicians, low-profile kind of bands, and we do seek and get permission from our neighbors, understanding that, you know, this could be a disruption, but the Guilleries and the Aiden's of the world are in full support. It's a nice day. The volunteerism is high, we get a ton of people, and it's a sellout every year.
And don't forget that terrific stuffy contest. I was trying to recruit the stuffy people from the, from the common event that the Mosaico had. There's all these, like, businesses there, saying, you know, we have another one of these, and there's hardly any businesses that come to that, so.
And it's worth noting, there is another minor change this year for the stuffy competition. Not only are the businesses, but the residents were going back to the private stuffy competition.
Nice.
I didn't think we'd gone away from that.
It's a fun-filled day.
So, I, we have an enthusiastic motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
We thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next is the petition of Lynn Shaw on behalf of the Bristol Merchants Association, request council permission for the closure of State Street between Hope and Thane Street to hang, and also to hang banners for State Street Fair Event to be held on October 6, 2018. You have recommendations of the Fire Chief, Town Administrator, Economic Development Coordinator, and Director of Public Works to approve with certain conditions. Also, late item recommendation from the Chief of Police also to approve with certain conditions.
Welcome.
Wow. Thank you.
Based on all the recommendations, I'd like to make a motion to approve as well.
I'm second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, please.
Thank you. So, this is an event that we did hold in the past, actually, when I had just first come to Bristol as a business owner, and Linda Aruda, I think at that point, was the head of the committee, and it was a very successful event. People have been asking for it every year. They're like, why do you not do the State Street Fair anymore? Obviously, which we always run into is volunteers, it's tough to keep volunteers going for many years. So, now that we have a few more new volunteers, and myself and Linda are still hanging in there, we want to bring back the State Street Fair, so.
I think it's great, and I think the venue of how it's closed, and just everybody's out there, and it's just a vibrant environment of people strolling and providing to our businesses and establishments.
Correct. Yeah. And it would be mostly artists. We already have a few signed up, kind of waiting in the wings, so I think it's going to be a great event, and we will probably want to, hopefully in the future years, each year, make it a little bigger, maybe expand it to other streets or other parks, the Town Common, maybe Independence Park, and have a few different events going on on the same day.
Well, so far, it has been excellent.
Thank you.
And that will be on October 6?
Correct.
October 6.
10 to 5.
10 to 5. All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you there.
The next item is item F4, and this is the petition of Catherine Ziff on behalf of Bristol historical and preservation society, request council permission to allow food trucks at the flea and fair fundraising event to be held on August 4, 2018. You have, this is on the grounds of the State House, and you have the recommendations provided by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police to approve with certain conditions.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I'm not Catherine.
I know. We have lots of, it's not a doppelganger, what is it? Representatives.
I'm Doty Church, and I'm representing the board.
Welcome.
You got some background with the petition. We, this is our first flea market. We wanted to expand it a little bit and make it a little more festive, so we're going to have some pop-up tents next to the State House on the lawn, and we thought it would be nice if we could have some food trucks, which would park sort of in the parking spaces along the street, right next to the sidewalk. Maybe ice cream for the kids, some food, lemonade, things like that.
So, my only concern is, I know a couple of times, Reynolds School had it on the sidewalk away from the street and not on the street, and they had one, and you're asking for three. I know the State House Foundation and the Courtyard, the land proximity of what they own.
200 feet.
It ends, like, kind of like, in between Byfield and the State House, so, I mean, I would just encourage that the trucks be off the road. I'm just worried about safety. I'm worried about the traffic flow of that corridor, High Street. I know a petition was in front of us before about closing down that parcel of High Street. We have a rescue fire station over there, so if there's any way where we can just incorporate that parcel of land incorporated with the courthouse and our townland and put the trucks there, and kind of confine so people are off, away from the road as much as possible, that's what I would encourage. I don't know what my colleagues think. I just think it would be safer. I'm obviously in support of this, but I think we have to approach it in a safe way, so.
Councilman Stewart, are you saying to pull the trucks behind, like, Byfield, you know, in that parking lot?
I believe, I believe once we stop food trucks on, not only that, but I think we're also starting a precedent of when applicants specify they want food trucks on the streets, our ordinance specifies, we have to be careful if we could put them in confines of the certain event itself, when this council, you know, grants a petitioner this type of food truck accommodation, I think we, again, have to be mindful of, once we stop putting them on streets, it can open the door for other applicants to put them on streets in other areas of town, so I think we have to be very mindful and careful of that. I think they can accomplish what they need to be, because even on the town road, whether it's going to infringe on the townland outside the courthouse land, I would just ask for liability insurance that, you know, with our Parks and Recreation, because it would be part of that land, just to go through that process. That's, that's one of our concerns, as long as, you know, those are met, I'm in full support.
So, I'm just confused as to where you would like them parked. Do you want them parked in front of the State House on the lawn that is owned, or is owned, well, really, is owned by the State House, the 200 feet? We have 200-foot frontage.
I'm trying to accommodate your event, whether you put the food trucks on the State House foundation land, or on the town proximity land.
Oh.
You're going to have pop-up tents, so however you want to coordinate.
But on the lawn, off the street.
I want them off the road and away from the sidewalk, so there's full traffic flow, pedestrian traffic flow, and safety measures.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Is there any objection to that?
I don't have any.
Well, I have no objection, I just want the input, maybe, of the administrator parking it on the lawn, that we would want to make sure that we don't cause damage to the landscaping and the property there, so I don't know if we can provide more direction specifically on where it could be located, but maybe that should be, help the applicant identify that.
I think it'd be, to put it in, like Eddie said, right in between the State House and the town's land. We've had the carnival over there and Mount Hope, I mean, Mount Hope's feast, and, you know, I think three trucks, we can certainly handle.
Well, we just had the bleachers for 4th of July for the Chief Marshal, so, you know, in essence, it's just three food trucks that would be in the same area. That's the area we're talking. For everyone to understand, is between the State House and Byfield School, that piece of parcel of land.
That's right.
Okay.
And do the trucks provide their own trash holloway and all that? How does that all work?
We will, we will ensure that all of the trash is taken away, whether they provide it, or we'll provide receptacles there, so that by the next day, everything will be gone.
If, if the outline according with the administrator and the Parks and Recreation Director, when this motion takes place, is if, you could just talk to the Parks and Recreation Director?
I will.
Of the protocols of using the townland and the Town Common.
Absolutely.
Do you defer to Parks and Rec to make, and the administrator, obviously, to make that ultimate? Okay. Did I hear that as a motion?
That is a motion.
Perfect.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I saw a hand up, and you got it in time, so, but you need to come up to the microphone.
My name is Linda Aruda.
Welcome.
And thank you for being here. That piece of asphalted area that is connected to Byfield, I'm going to recommend that the BHPS reaches out to Arts in Common.
Okay.
And say, I mean, that organization is right there, and they're a marvelous group of people. I mean, I've worked with them before, and that asphalted area is right there at Byfield, which, from cleanliness point of view, and cleanup, and trash, and all of that stuff, I think it's an ideal place. I mean, they're going to have a flea market, and it's Dan Manchester who's coordinating the flea market, so you're going to have a really great event, and if you would have in that asphalted area, you know, you go up there by Byfield School, right in there, it's like a magnet.
I know they have been doing work, right?
It's just a suggestion, and no, I don't want to be on the committee.
I think that that's a good place for the, for the food trucks.
Sure.
Especially if, if they can orient their event towards that direction.
Exactly.
So, I think even if, if you didn't have enough vendors for year one, like, down the road, that would be the place for the trucks to come, because you wouldn't have to worry about, you know.
And it's non-traffic, it serves Eddie.
The ground is soft, whatever the case is.
I mean, you're concerned about traffic and children and all of that stuff.
And the wear and tear on the property is diminished as well.
And I am, I do share Mr. Tisk's concern about landscaping there.
Right.
Well, we take that into consideration with everything on the Town Common, but to the point of this event, I think you're utilizing the State House itself in conjunction with the outside facilities.
Excellent.
So I think it's the close proximity that was taken into consideration.
And the collaborative nature of working with Arts in Common.
I think that'd be great.
I mean, it's a common, it's intended for the common purpose. I mean, I think it's, I think it's great. Congratulations.
Which is, which is also why we're doing the pop-ups, because we want the merchants and the local people to become involved in the event.
It's a collaborative thing. So that's, that's just, I don't know, tell somebody, but maybe the town administrator could work with.
Absolutely.
So good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats. Good luck and we look forward to it.
And we're just getting like our whole calendar built up for the summer. I mean, in the fall, like I've been making jokes.
And that's, that's August 4th.
Yeah.
You stopped.
Ah, yes, we, we kind of voted. We almost got there, didn't we? So we had a motion and a second to approve with the recommendations set forth by Councilman Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I got that out in one breath.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council is item F5. This is the petition of David Marshall, 17 Naomi Street and others, requests council consideration for the relocation of the sports cage at Mount Hope High School along Naomi Street. You had the recommendation provided by the town administrator, fire chief and chief of police who recommend relocation. And there's also supplemental information provided as a late item by the petitioner.
Thank you. Well, good evening. Full disclosure, I am actually David Marshall.
Ladies and gentlemen, first for the evening. Thank you.
Lifelong Bristolian and I have resided at Naomi Street, 17 Naomi Street since 2001. And I, I'm the spokesperson for the Friends of Naomi Street, which was formed after the installation of the hammer throw cage on Naomi Street on May 10th. We had not received any previous information, any of the residents of Naomi Street, that that was part of the construction plans. And so we had gotten together and we had done some research about this particular structure. And then we went to the school committee meeting on May 29th and we brought up 11 different issues regarding our feelings about the cage. And I can summarize those very quickly for you. The first thing that we were concerned with was the lack of communication in which the school committee didn't feel that they needed to inform us about the project and that it was our responsibility to engage in communication to discover the details of the plans. Our most important point is the safety in regards to this particular activity and its close proximity to the street. And of course, for us as well, that reside on Naomi Street, the aesthetic implications of having a 35-foot structure across the street on the, the school property there. But in regards to the safety, in our, in the information that we gave to the school committee, we showed research in which there were multiple incidents, incidents over the past decade of spectators, participants and officials that have actually died at these particular types of events. And that information is included in that packet. Another thing that we talked about was the gawk factor. Though we truly appreciate as people drive by that they're slowing down for once on Naomi Street, unfortunately, we're also seeing them swerving their vehicles as they are looking at the cage. And we're worried about what that means as far as pedestrians and the fact that there isn't a lot of distance between the fence and the street. Also, the increased opportunity for mischief and vandalism close to the residences. We're also concerned about the parking area for people that are going to see these events and what type of handicap parking would be available. We certainly did bring up many points about the multiple, what we perceive to be better locations for a cage for an event like this. I do want to make it known that we told the school committee, we are very much in favor of their efforts to increase the amount of fields that they have and the athletic events that they have. We're just concerned with the safety of this particular event. And so we had done some research and we found other cages, most notably the one in Portsmouth that is about 150 feet away from any residential street. And my father actually talked to one of the groundskeepers there and had asked them why it was so far away from the street. And they said it's because of grave safety concerns. Also, we're concerned about the maintenance of this particular structure because the one that is currently being used is in disrepair. And we were told by the school committee that it would be maintained, but we're concerned that that would actually happen, being that the current one has not been maintained. So since then, we met with Dr. Andrade and members of the school committee a second time. And the result of that meeting is the cover letter that I've given to all of you and our notice to you, which I'd like to read for public record. Dear council members, the Friends of Naomi Street have formed as a group to contest the placement of a sports cage at the western edge of the Mount Hope High School sports field complex. The cage was installed on May 10th, 2018. We are providing you with this packet of information that has already been presented to the Bristol Warren School Committee at their meeting of May 29th, 2018, and also at a special meeting where the group was invited to meet members of the school committee with Superintendent Andrade to discuss possible solutions to the problem. As stated in our letter to the school committee dated May 29th, we object to the location of the cage on the basis of the concern for public safety, the negative aesthetic visual impact on the neighborhood, and the impact on vehicular traffic as it pertains to the gawk factor which has already begun. We cited 11 issues in our letter, but these are our main ones. At the special meeting of Wednesday, June 27th, which was scheduled by the superintendent for 4:00 PM in the afternoon, only three of our members were able to attend due to work schedules. The solutions that several members of the school committee proposed were basically superficial and cosmetic, such as arborvitae and a 15-foot wall to hide the cage, which is 37 feet in height. Soon we realized that the school committee's solution was to try to quell our outcry for dismantling the inappropriate, the inappropriate placement of the cage. We believe that hiding the cage with trees will only make it more dangerous in the event of an errant throw of the hammer, the shot put or the discus. In eight years of planning, the school committee never sought to find out the individual cost of erecting the cage as it relates to the cost of the entire project. However, in the short time since we expressed our concerns, the committee has been able to determine that the cost of dismantling the cage will be $43,000 or $47,000 or $50,000. The differences in cost popped up at different junctures in the meeting. The school committee has invited our group to return for yet another meeting to arrive at more solutions. In fact, no one on the school committee realized how obtrusive this sports cage would be as it is now located. When they looked at it on the architect's layout as a two-dimensional analysis, they never envisioned the three-dimensional, three-dimensional atrocity that it now exists. We believe the one solution is to admit to the terrible planning error and dismantle or relocate the cage. In the final analysis, it will cost decidedly less to dismantle the sports cage than it would to settle litigation and payment of wrongful death settlement. Attached in this packet are examples where sports authorities took every step to ensure the safety of participants, spectators and officials. Their efforts were in vain as these accidents were simply unforeseeable. Rhode Island is one of only three states out of the 50 that have high school participation in these dangerous field events. One has to wonder what the other 47 states are aware of that we are not. We are asking that the Bristol Town Council please intervene in this situation. The cage really does need to be removed or moved from the location on Naomi Street.
Mr. Solicitor, could you give some clarity on, on what possibilities the council has?
What I would recommend is that you refer the entire matter to my office and to the administrator. We have conducted some initial research with regard to the fact that the town is the landlord and the school committee is the tenant on these premises. I've also seen on this evening that both the fire chief and police chief have submitted items, letters to you which echo the concerns brought by the citizen involving the health and safety issues. The town council certainly has through its police powers the opportunity to act on health and safety concerns. The reason I'm requesting that you submit it to my office and the administrator's office is to give us the opportunity to make contact with the individuals on the school side that we feel we need to make contact with, to try to convince them to do the right thing here before we go any further. And then I can come back with you with a response and further recommendations.
In your letter, you also mentioned that there's a subsequent meeting with the school committee?
They have asked us to come back to them, to, to offer them more solutions. But it was very clear at our last meeting that the solution of relocating the cage was not on the table. They're willing to do many things aesthetically. Like I said, they even said, well, we could put some trees up. And that was my response to that was in much of our research, a lot of these accidents happened because of a ricochet.
Wouldn't the trees be even closer to the road?
Uh, one would assume, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there is only 13 feet from Naomi Street to the fence. And then there's another about 10 feet from the center of the cage where they're throwing it. And the, the throw is parallel to the street. So it is very possible, even though it has those two pieces that come in on the sides, for the, the hammer throw to either go above or to go to the side where it could hit the top of the fence and go into the street or across the street. We did a little further research and not that I would think that any of our Mount Hope athletes would be able to throw as far as the world record holder, but the world record is actually more than a football field. So we're, we haven't actually done any particular research in that factor, but we're not even sure that the amount of space that they've given for the throw is appropriate enough.
But even the vegetation of that type of height to accomplish this, to, to hide it or cosmetically or whatever, would be in an astronomical cost to bring in such vegetation that height?
I would think so.
That's attached to that.
I would also think that it would be, like I said, increase the, the potential for, for danger.
And the Friends of Naomi would never, you guys were never brought into the conversation or at all?
No. We were told that the plans had been worked over for a time period of eight years. And we were never even told that, that there were any construction plans. It wasn't until we started to see the construction work happening across the street. And then, of course, on May 10th, when the cage was actually installed.
Well, full disclosure, I'm on the school building committee along with the administrator and we actually allocate and prioritize the projects going forward and the grant money that comes in. The format of the plans of the mitigation plan for all those fields is the extent of what I saw. I did not see any, the, the implementation of this is where the, this field's going to be, this is where this field's going to be. But in no way, shape or form, did I see any erection of type of objects such as this when they were explained as. So that's full disclosure from my standpoint from a council. Okay?
We, in our, our last meeting with them, they showed us the plans. And there are multiple sections of the field as it's going to be planned in the further phases of the project, which are labeled as multi-use fields, which we were told, you know, for gym classes or for different types of activities, it allows it to be used for all of those activities. And one section is for a softball. There's multiple, there's two fields in a T formation adjacent to the tennis court. And then there is that diagonal field, which would be used for soccer and lacrosse. And then, of course, the cage is on the side of that. But with those multi-use fields, there is certainly an opportunity to pull the softball section over and to put the cage behind the G building, where it would be more appropriate because an errant throw would go into the woods rather than, you know, having an opportunity to hit someone.
David, can I just ask you a quick question? And this is a part about only three states allow their high schools to participate in this?
Rhode Island, Missouri and Texas, yes.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't realize that.
So I thank you for your presentation and I'm not.
Thank you.
I want to spend as much time addressing this, but I think the intent here from the council's standpoint upon the recommendation of the solicitor is to refer this to the administrator's office with the guidance of the solicitor to act in the best interest accordance with their relationship with yourself as representation with the Naomi Street residents and the school department and the school committee.
Wonderful.
I'll second the motion. Oh, sorry.
I just, I wanted to, Councilman Tisk wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I think, you know, hearing your well-done letter, your letter here, I think there's two, two issues, two problems. One is the aesthetics and one is the, the safety concern. And I, I sometimes wonder what the council's role is on, in the aesthetics part. I do feel that the safety part, there is a role for the council to take into consideration. So I think that the two, two issues really should be separated, you know, the aesthetics piece and the safety piece. And I would maybe suggest one more step before referring it. And that would be to maybe for this council to consider writing a letter of recommendation or suggestion that the, the hammer cage not be used until that there's some further determination be made whether it is safe. It clearly doesn't seem safe in some ways. But maybe just right away, we should say, encourage the school department, please do not use that until we work at resolving this.
Well, Councilman Tisk, I can actually give you some insight on that. They did tell us that the, the cage is not intended to be used until the, the last phase of the project is completed, which is somewhere between two and three years, to my understanding. However, they have installed the netting already around the cage and, and that is still up. So we also had the concern of if that's going to remain that way for the, the next two or three years before someone throws it, have, will that net then be deteriorated enough when students actually do begin to throw the hammer?
Yeah, I guess I'm not familiar with the popularity of the event, but you know, you might think that if someone is a budding challenger in this event, that they see a facility that's conducive for them training or practicing, that they might take it upon themselves to, to do some training and practicing. So maybe it would make, would be a good idea to, or encourage the school committee to post a sign and also make a policy statement. You know, this facility is not to be used for any purposes.
Wonderful recommendation, yes.
So as a step pre, prior to some of the process that we, we would hope that the administrator goes through to resolve this.
I would amend, I would amend my motion when referring it to the administrator to Councilman Tisk's recommendation that, that be conveyed to the school department and the school committee. And also, there's procedures and protocols and we thank you for coming in front of us, but we also have to be mindful, obviously, there's another meeting that they wanted to schedule with you. And the school committee is an elected body such as us, so we, we just want to make sure that the procedure is done right and there's place cards for protections in place, that until this gets convened and, and hopefully you have the best outcome for the safety of the community. So.
Yeah, we agree. That's, that's why we did go to the school committee first. We wanted to make sure that, that we gave them every opportunity.
And I'll second Councilman Stewart's amended motion.
Is there a discussion?
I just had a question for Mike. As far as the timeline goes, is there any guesstimate for the residents?
Yeah, it won't be for the next meeting, which is August 1st, because we're not going to be able to accomplish what we need to accomplish between now and August 1. But certainly I'll be back to you with an opinion for the following meeting in August.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
It's August 26th.
Good evening.
Welcome.
I heard the word, the term doppelganger.
Could you?
I am going to introduce myself.
Oh, I see where you're going. I see.
I am not Danny DeVito.
This is a good meeting. I, I've enjoyed it. Thank you. So, thank you.
My name is Manny Marshall. I've lived in Bristol all my life, except the first three days I was at Providence lying in hospital back in 1950.
You're welcome back anytime.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I live at 36 Academy Avenue, which is 1.2 miles away from the Chestnut Street entrance of Naomi Street. So why am I here? I have a son, daughter-in-law and two grandchildren who live directly across from what I call the atrocity. Now, my son is a little bit more diplomatic than I am. I'm going, going to tell you about my meeting this morning. Not really a meeting, but it turned into a meeting. I went to Portsmouth High School to check out the proximity of their sports complex cage to the main entrance of the high school. While I was there, they were pumping out the septic system. And I guess when they do that, a groundskeeper has to be with the company representative. So I drove right up and I, and first of all, that, that cage is about 150 to 175 feet from the main entrance. So I, I asked who was the groundskeeper? He, he told me. And I said, gee, you know, as far as access to visitors who wants to see that activity, wouldn't it be more efficacious to have the cage 10 to 15 feet from the street? And the two individuals looked at each other and the groundskeeper said to me, are you stupid? So I took that as, thank you, that's the information I came for. And I, and I left. Now, one, one of the disclosures at the meeting with the superintendent, the second, our second meeting, is that the group, the Friends of Naomi Street complained about parking that's being taken away from activities on that street. For instance, the 4th of July, 50 to 60 vehicles used to park there. We were told that's not our problem. And you know what? I understand that. It is not the school committee's problem. They leased the property. They're taking away what was unofficial parking. And that's fine. But in the conversation, they said, as a matter of fact, by, by law, we do have to have some parking there. Adjacent to the cage, we need to have three or four places for handicap parking. I'm not the brightest light in the house, but when you think about that, if there's an errant throw, the people who are least likely to get away from it will be parked right next to it. That makes no sense to me. Just a couple more points. What is an errant throw with the shot put or with a hammer throw? Experts make mistakes when they throw the hammer. The way an errant throw most often occurs is first they wind up over their head and then they spin three or four times. If they lose their footing, their grounding, the trajectory changes from out toward the field to over the net. That's our concern. You have a sidewalk across the street. In the afternoon, people exercise. I've asked some of the neighbors there, 100 to 150 people on certain weekends will walk their dogs, walk their children, bicycles on that sidewalk. So that's, that's a concern, an errant throw. Now, the research that we, we did shows that very few people who have one of these accidents go to the emergency room, get a Band-Aid or some Tylenol and go back to work Monday morning. Usually what happens the next week is the family has a funeral. That's how bad these situations are. Now, the, the hammer is a 16-pound hammer. When you take into consideration the acceleration, the velocity and the thrust, the hammer will impact not with 16 pounds, but with a force of 447 pounds when it hits its directional target or accidental target. Last point, the group was told that the safety and maintenance of plant and equipment were of the utmost in planning the complex. And I was somewhat dismayed to hear that no mention was made of the And I was somewhat dismayed to hear that no mention was made of the safety of individuals, students, athletic department, authorities. It was plant and equipment. So with that, I thank you for hearing me out, and good evening, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not Danny DeVito.
Thank you. So we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Well, it's quite a different hammer. I tried to get some background, and I watched Thor five times, and obviously, it's a total different hammer, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a late item provided by Caroline Jacobus Prince of Historic Bristol, 495 Hope Street. It would like to address the council about requirements for board and commission appointments.
Who is this?
Was it late item?
Oh, okay. I don't know what's on this.
Welcome.
My name is Caroline Jacobus. I live at 35 Church Street in Bristol. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to address the town council. I'm speaking not only as a Bristol citizen and the owner of an historic property in the historic district, but also as a member of the Friends of Historic Bristol, a nonprofit corporation whose mission is to strengthen our community, preserve and protect the cultural and historical character of Bristol's historic district, and support the economic growth that respects the small scale of the built environment. We recognize how hard it is to get people to serve on Bristol's boards and commissions, and we're working to get the word out to qualified residents of Bristol. We believe we could get more people interested, given a little more time to pass the word. In an effort to attract the best qualified appointees to filled vacancies on all boards and commissions, and to promote a fair and open process of appointing, the Friends of Historic Bristol is presenting a petition to the town council requesting that it adopt the boards and commission policies detailed in the petition which Mr. Cirillo now has in hand. The suggested selection process of members, requirements for membership, and appointment review process represent model best practices used in other municipalities in this state. We believe the suggested policies, if adopted by the town council, would help promote participation by the citizens and give ample notice for recruitment. Further, we ask the chair, Mr. Cirillo, to recognize the Friends of Historic Bristol as a preservation group who can provide a list of candidates as is stated in the town code. We are concerned that the requirements for the appointment of new members to these board and commission positions are not being met. Specifically, the requirements in the town code that at least three members of the Historic District Commission are to have professional qualifications and expertise in American or local history, architectural history, architecture, real estate, historic preservation, planning, historic building, contracting, archaeology, or other areas of relevant expertise. We have provided the members of the town council with a copy of the Secretary of the Interior's Minimum Professional Standards for Historic Preservation. You have that in hand. Our analysis of the current board indicates that only one member of the Historic District Commission holds a recognized credential which fulfills this requirement of the town code. We are concerned about this lack of professional historic preservation expertise on the HDC because, among other reasons, failure to meet the three expert member minimum can result in the loss of standing for acquiring grants. I will repeat that. Failure to meet the three expert member minimum can result in the loss of standing for acquiring grants, causing negative economic consequences for Bristol. I am a professional grant administrator, so I know there is a great deal of money available for historic preservation initiatives. I have written grants for those purposes myself. If Bristol is not currently seeking the most grant preservation funding possible, it should do so, but it can only seek that funding if membership of the HDC meets the professional standards of the Secretary of the Interior. Bristol is blessed with a population that currently includes many people with the professional qualifications that would meet the Secretary of the Interior standards. Please be assured that the Friends of Historic Bristol will do its best to help recruit experienced and credentialed individuals so that you can have a standing file of qualified applicants for the HDC for future openings. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chair and members of the town council is, excuse me, item G1, and this is for the public service appointments for July. You have the Historic District Commission. There are three positions available to, with terms to expire in July of 2021. You have the applications all seeking reappointment from Orianna Lima, John M. Allen, and Gerald
What's this council's plan here?
Well, in regards, if, I believe there was just testimony recorded in the minutes of this late item by Ms. Jacobus, and this council, and I believe our departments assure that when we do interviews, and I understand that criteria is set forth by our own town charter for those positions, and I do know Mr. Birkenholz's background, but are you aware of all the other backgrounds? Are you specifying that someone needs to have every single criteria to abide by that of everything that is pointed by our town charter?
The standards are written.
Thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah.
The standards that you have in your hand are quite explicit, and they detail exactly what experience and what professional credentials are required to meet the Secretary of the Interior standards. They're quite clear.
But what I'm saying by the clarity of it is they have to have every single aspect that's clarified in this.
It says either a credential—
Either.
—XYZ, or experience of X number of years—
Yeah.
—in that field.
And I would look to my solicitor, because I'm a stickler for words when there are either/or, so that holds on a lot of applicants and our members, and you have to understand that we, I thank you for taking the time to present in front of us, but also, being Friends of Historic, I'm just curious, why are you presenting now? I know the hard work that you and your people that preserve our town and have that into our consideration, but every member on our board, when you're speaking, I believe, has criterias that affiliated with that. And if that's not the case, then I would like to be aware of that. When we do our interviews, I think those are the pointed questions that we go by our ordinance and ask those pertinent questions. To get people with college degrees, I would think, and we're more than willing to get your recommendations of recruitment, but to get highly qualified, college-educated people that, you know, three members of a historic that meet every single criteria, I would hope that we would have had them over the years that I've been on this council. So I'm just curious of the intent of why this is presented all of a sudden.
It's not all of a sudden. We have formed, and we are now incorporated in a nonprofit. We can now come to you.
Okay.
So it's, we have not existed previous to this.
Okay. Thank you.
We know, basically, the background of all of the members. Many of the members have some experience, though it is not a professional level experience. They have not had that as their profession. They do not have the academic credential or the professional credential. The Secretary of the Interior standards are quite specific.
And I agree with you, and by no means, I said, I appreciate what you gave us. It's just, from our standpoint, you have to understand, when we're filling boards and commissions, the chairman says it quite often over the years, that it's advertised all the time for public appointments, and sometimes we have trouble filling our boards.
I can imagine it, because I just saw your notice, and it did not in any way state any of those qualifications that are really necessary for at least three members of the board. If perhaps the public notice could state what it is you're looking for, that would be helpful. If more time was given to respond, I saw a June 21st notice, and you had to get the application in within seven business days, and the application deadline was on a Sunday. So those are problems for people trying to apply.
And we did have this discussion, believe it or not, I believe, on interviews of the past appointees. This came up with our website, so you're right on target, and I agree with it, that we should be having it on our town website so people are aware of what's presented in what you're trying to accomplish, so I agree with that. I'm just saying, from where I sit, you know, I just don't want to take a lot of our board members and applicants and take their dedication and time and, you know, their background and how they give their input to the town and our projects.
I do not, I have only appreciation and respect for the members who spend hundreds and hundreds of hours giving of themselves.
But we can always improve, so.
But I will say, you put yourself at risk as a municipality when you do not have the required three-member minimum of people who meet the Secretary of the Interior standards, because you do not have standing then to go for a grant. You want hundreds of thousands of dollars, and that is what I have gone for, hundreds of thousands of dollars for historic preservation activities, but your board doesn't meet the Secretary of the Interior standards, and you have no standing to apply for that funding.
Thank you.
Mike, is there any validity in?
So I have a few comments.
Okay.
First of all, the directive that you try and find individuals with certain backgrounds is a permissive, not mandatory, you should, so it's something that would be good to have.
Okay.
It's not mandatory. Number two, this directive is actually in your code of ordinances, it's not in the town charter. You know, the town charter is thought of as the Bible. You must follow what's there. This is in the code of ordinances, which you as a council have the ability, as you know, to amend and change from time to time. Number three, I certainly appreciate the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines. These are addressed to professionals, not to your board members. They're certainly not standards that you need to follow in appointing board members. So I'm not saying that these aren't worthy goals. I think you as a council do your best, whether you're appointing someone to the zoning board, the HDC, whatever, the economic, whatever board that you do, you, unlike many other councils, go through due diligence. You interview individuals. You ask them questions. You look at their backgrounds, their formal applications. I think you do well at that as a council. So again, these are guidelines, and you are free to pick and choose the members that you want to appoint. Probably a good idea to reference in future ads, you know, please refer to section whatever of the town code on your website or in your application so that individuals see what the criteria, the standards are. However, when you interview individuals for these boards, you know what those criteria are, and I know you ask those questions during the interviews.
I think it's also like, it gets a little tricky, because you also, we also have to have a certain number of members who live in the district.
And it is mandatory that you have seven members. That's a shall, so you have to appoint seven members, and you're right. And as was pointed out, these individuals put in hundreds of hours of time. It's difficult filling these positions. So again, you do that balancing act with all these various criteria, and who's willing to serve, and you do the best that you can for the town.
Thank you.
I wonder if there's room within the expiration of the current, very committed members of these boards to, out of an abundance of caution, you know, to continue to advertise one more meeting to see if there's any other efforts we can make, whether it's through the town's website, through other outreach to organizations, to shake the trees, as they say, to find out if there's anyone else interested in these boards. I'm not sure whether the schedule allows it. I just posed that as a question to see if maybe it might make sense, even though we have met the obligation with public notice, would there be any harm in continuing to shake the trees?
Council's thoughts?
I can share mine. We actually don't have to advertise at all. The requirements set forth to us, by us, is that we can appoint without any conversation, without any advertising. In the time that we've been here, I've been here, and then in the time that Mary's been here longer than all of us, we've always advertised. Why? Because we look to engage the public. We want the public involved. Although I'm not opposed to additional advertising, I feel that it happens to be the historic district in front of us right now, but whatever board or commission, all three of these people have been on the board and have requested to be reappointed on that board, and I think if we are not, or any one of these councils, myself included, is not interested in appointing one of these members again, then we should just say that and look for more people. If we're happy with these three people that are in front of us, I think we should reappoint. That's my thought.
Not only that, but I think it kind of, you kind of touched on it, is at any given time, we as councilors, when these appointments are up, can make a suggestion, we don't want to appoint tonight, re-advertise. It has been advertised.
It has been.
That's what, you know, we're going down a slippery slope. I mean, we'd all do consideration that, I'm glad Ms. Jacobus gave this information to us, and I'm full support that, like we talked about in the past, we should be reiterating to reinforce and get the best applicants and reinforce for that advertisement on our town website. So, you know, I think it was a good thing that this was presented to us tonight, but I also think at any given time, we advertise, applicants are on our agenda. It's when we don't have people that we have to re-advertise, or people resign, and we don't have any new applicants, that, you know, we have to make a motion to, you know, continue the re-advertising.
Well, I think the thing in particular is, on this board in particular, we have had a very difficult time. So I mean, I think it's great to get people interested and to apply to any of our boards. We have had vacancies in this board for a long time, and this, I would say, this board is probably one of the most difficult to find people for, sometimes because of the requirements, and sometimes because you have to live in the district and so forth. But it's really, and you want to have a balance of people with different backgrounds, as well as, you know, just the sort of reasonable, reasonableness aspect of it, because we have people who actually live in homes. They have to be able to live in their homes, and they're not museums. So I think that we have had great difficulty finding applicants for the Historic District Commission, and, you know, I think as much as people can help us drum up people, and as we've gone out and advertised, and talked to people, and we say it at council meetings, and we say, if anybody wants to do it, get in touch with us, I mean, many, many, many times. So I think that the more, the merrier, the more you can get drum up interest in all of our boards and commissions, the better. We're definitely open to that. I mean, many people who have just moved to town get actively involved in Bristol through our boards and commissions, and, but I, I think that right now, I'm not, you know, there usually, we, usually unless there's some significant issue with a, with one of the boards or with a person, we tend to reappoint people who are on there. But I do feel that, I do feel like over the last couple of years, we have been out there on this particular board over and over and over and over again, trying to get people to apply, and trying to get people to participate on this board, so, but.
I just, my two cents is, Ms. Jacobson, thank you for adding this, it's definitely helpful. My two cents is, I think that we have to look at an overall restructuring of the AC, HDC, because the process itself, I think, is where we really need to home in on, which means I— I think there needs to be a council workshop, if my colleagues agree, maybe this isn't the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, to bring that up, but long and the short of it, taking a look at the process because I think a lot of people that are in historical homes that want to stay in their historical homes may not be able to afford the update. What is that process for them if they can't, if they don't want to replace the windows? What processes for that? But just making that, I think, clear to the residents and having a more streamlined process and training that applicant that's coming in and wants to be on the HDC, because we have a lot of good people on the HDC that have served us for a long time, very, very well. But I think what gets lost is the communication back out as to what they can and cannot do. And I think that's maybe our job to take a better look at that full process and maybe even end it with a satisfaction survey, I don't know, to kind of say, how can we improve to make this overall process better? So I appreciate you bringing this up because I think it's something we can incorporate into the interview process, but overall, I think it's a bigger restructure to kind of take a look at where we're going in the 21st century and where these historical homes, how do we fit with the new, the new materials that are out there? Can they be incorporated in there?
I think that's a great point.
I think we have stuff to go by, right? We had a committee in the past, so I think that documentation's still on file that we can start with and then look at any changes from that point till now and how things change by standards or whatever that come about and different atmospheres of our town and go by that.
I think we've talked about it at one point in the past, but, I mean, because I was on that special committee and I think, I think that Blue Ribbon Commission, so to speak, whatever it was called, I think they did a lot of good work in terms, and some of it is in effect right now and has smoothed out the process a little bit. But I think there were lots more recommendations and, you know, the council at the time, and with all due respect to the board, I don't, I think what happened was it was, you know, there were recommendations of this special commission and then given to the HDC to look at and to make comments on. And they didn't necessarily agree with everything. And so a lot of this stuff didn't get implemented in. And I think it would be worth taking a look back at that report, you know, even if we, even this long list, another meeting to discuss that because some of them, we may be able to go further. So like, you know, the whole administrative review process was implemented as a result of that. And, and look at Diane because she was involved in that. And if, you know, so that seems to be working, it may need to be tweaked a little bit. It's, and then there were some things about how much percentage you could just do to fix something. And I think those are some of the things that didn't get implemented, if I remember correctly, I'm not exactly sure because it was a while ago, but I think that's something we just need to go back and look at. I mean, you have that report somewhere.
I do, I do, and I think I had been actually looking at it not that long ago. I think we did actually, I think a lot was implemented, but I can certainly go through it and maybe just do like a matrix of what was and what wasn't and we can look at that again.
Yeah, I think that would be really good, yeah.
That'd be great.
So what's this council's pleasure in regards to appointments?
Going to make a motion to reappoint Orienne Lima, John Allen and Gerald Walsh to the Historic District Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, is there a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I also ask the council, there was some, just so you know, the way that we advertise is longstanding council directive. If there's a desire to change that somehow, if the council would let me know what it would like me to include, I mean, there's always a concern, obviously the website stuff is, doesn't cost us anything, the newspaper however does, and if we're talking about a larger ad, I'm going to be spending more of your money. So if perhaps you could let me know how much further you would like this to go.
I think that's a great question and although it is not specific to HDC, it could be part of that conversation that we have about the HDC and have it bleed out into our other boards and commissions. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Okay. The next is the Planning Board Auxiliary Members, there are two with terms to expire in July 2021. You have the request from Stephen Katz of 42 River Street and Brian Clark of 31 Evelyn Drive who seek reappointment. And I will also bring to the attention of the council, recent resignation of full member, Michael Rossi of 190 Hope Street.
I'd like to thank Mr. Rossi and send him a thank you. He was very instrumental in his dedication to the planning board for many years. We thank him for that. With his resignation, I would like to make a motion to elevate Stephen Katz to be a full, regular member and also elevate Brian Clark to reappointment to be first auxiliary member.
And to advertise for the second auxiliary member.
For the second auxiliary.
And Mr. Clark's going to ask how long you want to advertise? See what happened right there?
And how do we want to advertise?
We always do advertise.
Yes, we do. I was just being funny. But yes, we should, I, so, I'm sorry.
There's a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think he did a terrific job.
Thank you.
And also we have from the chairman of the Christmas Festival Committee, a recommendation on additional member, Lori Cruz.
Motion to accept Ms. Cruz to the Christmas Festival Committee?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, the Conservation Commission, you have the resignation of Rawle Abreu for Christine Court and the interest for appointment by Glenn Donovan of Two Regal Avenue.
Make a motion to thank Mr. Abreu, first time on the Conservation Commission, and also to schedule an interview for Mr. Donovan.
Second.
And to advertise?
And advertise.
Thank you. And there was a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the annual resolution authorizing the assessment of.
Lou?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
As pointed out, I wanted to thank, I always do this every time, we appreciate what our boards and commissions do. I think some excellent points were brought up this evening. I think we have some information that we'll all look at afterwards and then also with this meeting coming up. But whether it's HDC, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Conservation Commission, we appreciate, this council appreciates what you do. You represent us and going out there, and that's part of the conversation that we need to have too, is we appreciate what you do, we appreciate the time that you give because the town appreciates it too. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, we have item I-1 and some associated information. This is the annual resolution authorizing the assessment of valuations and levy of taxes, sewer service fees and sewer assessments per this year's budget and the information provided by the assessor.
Michelle?
All right. I'm just asking for an adoption of the resolution based on the adopted budget. The tax rate for 2018 will be $15.38 and the sewer rate will be $483 per year.
So right before, actually yesterday, I wanted to, I always like this, is I asked Julie, treasurer, to share, this is last year's number, but everybody is just certifying now and going to place, but this is the tax rates for the 39 cities and towns in Rhode Island and we are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th place out of 39. And I would hazard a guess that we're probably either 1 or 2 for services. That is not a number that you can, or at least initially, measure, but I speak of services as, actually Sergeant Murato brought to my attention recently that the responses that the police department goes to, for example, Chief, go like this, a cat in a tree. We get calls like that. The difference between what we do in Bristol and other places is that we actually respond to those things. So not only is the tax rate excellent, now everybody wants it lower, so do we. So disclaimer decide, it's excellent, the services are excellent, not only the quality, but the kindness that goes along with it. So nice job to my colleagues, nice job to the administrator, the treasurer, the tax collector, everyone sitting here. This is, and this is not a love fest, it's to say that you do a good job and there's a lot of hard work that's already been mentioned in here. And to do all of those things and stay in a very, very good place is, needs to be pointed out and I just did. So nice job.
May you clarify one thing?
Please.
And you said we were seventh, you mean seventh from the lowest?
Oh, thank you.
Right.
Thank you.
Not seventh high, it's seventh lowest.
We're on the good side of that, not the bad side of that. So yes, we are the seventh lowest, that is correct, thank you. Thank you for that clarity too. So we need a motion to adopt this resolution.
Motion to adopt resolution?
I'll second.
And there's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, Office of Water Resources regarding an unnamed pond tributary to Mount Hope Bay water quality certification. The comment period runs through July 23rd, 2018.
Motion to receive and file?
Second. There's a motion and a second, receive and file. Diane, there is nothing that we need to act on, on this? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item is the bid, the bills and expenditures, Section J, item J-1 is bid 887 for the installation of staging at the Wally School Building. There were no bids.
So we readvertise, Mr. Clark?
Or go on the market?
Open market.
Open market.
It's still best interests of the town with the administrator.
So you need to receive and file?
So refer this to the best interest, to the administrator, to act in the best interests of the town.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the following one is J-2, this is RFP number 888-1, this is for the audit services for the years ending June 30th, 2018 and sequel. You have four proposals provided, the first is from Citron Cooperman and Company of Providence for 2018 is $48,000, 2019 $49,000, 2020 is $50,000. The rest, I'm not going to mention the years, but they're going to be in the order of those years. The next is from Markham LLP of Providence, $46,000, $47,300 and $48,700 respectively. The next is PPA LLP of Warwick for $24,500 for each of the three years. And the last is from Hague and Sahady and Company, CPA's PC of Fall River, with the amounts of $26,000, $27,000 and $28,000.
Motion to refer this to the town administrator and treasurer to act in the best interests of the town? Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, Barrington Director and Chairman of Bristol County Water Authority for the month of July. That's item K-1.
Motion to receive and file?
I'll second with, I know Fairview Road and Ferry Road Main Replacements is part of this report. I know the Director of Public Works isn't here, but Steve, I think going forward with their paving funds and with those projects, we have to work in partnership with them on the paving afterwards, all these projects, so we can have that line of communication with them going forward, so.
So we have a motion and a second? Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is from the Solicitor's Office regarding loan modification agreement between the Town of Bristol and Mosaic Business and Community Development Corporation, item 1.
The town made a loan to Mosaic back in 2010, approximately $236,000. Mosaic has asked that the due date on the loan be extended and also in speaking with Julie on the best accounting and auditing practices, her recommendation is also that we extend it so it's not in technical default. This extension would go through December of 2020. To my recommendation, based upon my conversations with Julie, as well as understanding Mosaic's needs, that you act positively on this request.
What's this council's pleasure?
I move that we move forward on the loan modification agreement.
I'll second. The motion?
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I'd like to say, I mean, I wish this project would move a lot faster, but I don't see any alternative for us, I don't want to oblige the property on our hands and I think we have to keep hoping that it's going to keep moving forward and I think it will.
Well put. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Now we're at the point of the individual council member agenda items, beginning with Chairman Colorel.
So we've been here a long time, so I'm going to be real quick. Wow, what a Fourth of July, wow, it was hot. Oh my God, I had to throw away my suit, it's gone, it's just, it's no good anymore. My dry cleaner said that. Phenomenal job. I heard from so many residents and visitors of what a great job the Fourth of July Committee did, does and continues to do. Chief, I'm not going to share our conversations, but wow, there's so much that goes on that, and things go well, chief, there's so much that goes on and wow. I'm being a little cryptic, but honestly, it's a phenomenal job that happens. DPW, and I can't name everybody, but doing what they do and it's, I say this every year, it's the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, they put their hands around like this and the town is clean the next day. But the town is safe throughout all of that, which is not a small thing to do and in a world that we live in right now, that it continues to be not a small thing to do. So hats off to everyone involved, it was phenomenal. I said it was going to be quick, we had Tanyard Brook Phase 2 ground breaking and to remind everybody, Tanyard Brook Phase 1 is at the end of, right, Ferry Road and Hope Street and Wood Street where the water actually flows and doesn't go into people's yards like it did. This Phase 2 will continue that momentum and make good things that needed to happen and we've spent a lot of money to get here, we're going to spend a lot more money and it's very appropriate and it's very beneficial to not only the neighbors, but the whole town, keeping us safer and keeping people in their homes. If you've driven down Gibson Road recently and you've driven down Gibson Road six months ago, my God, what a difference. That road was horrible, it took so long because of working appropriately with National Grid to share the cost because, and BCWA, because they did a lot of digging there, but wow, is it a difference. And if you look around, there's been a lot of wonderful improvements down Fatima, Perry Street, right in front of, what is that cross street? I can't think of it right now, but looks wonderful. And we spend a million dollars a year and it looks like, you know, we could spend $10 million more. We can't because we need to keep that tax rate that we're talking about in a good place, but we're going to continue with that. I know Councilman Stewart's, that's been a particular focus point of yours, but all of ours. So let me leave you with this, again, wonderful job with the Fourth of July, I am so proud to represent this community, not only walking around saying Happy Fourth, but more importantly, it's after that and the responses that we get from people in other communities is just outstanding, which is that you do a great job. So I'm proud to sit next to all of you and near all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Wow, wow, that was perfectly said. Yeah, it was a great Fourth of July, it was hot, but I want to thank all the departments for doing a fantastic job and town administrator and everybody in the Fourth of July Committee. We pulled it together, a lot of people from other parts of the community came down. I work in East Greenwich and in Cranston and a lot of people at work came up to me saying, watching the parade on TV and going down to Bristol is just a special time in their family's lives. They have very, very vivid memories of it, so I'm proud to be part of that, we're part of it and we're making it happen. So that's about it and I just, special thanks to the Fourth of July Committee, I think Parks of Recreation, town administrator and Independence Park, there was always an issue with trash and you guys seemed to work together and this year, everybody was saying it was resolved, the issue was resolved. So thank you very much on that, that's a lot, I got a lot of calls on that in the past. Other than that, you have a good night, thank you.
Mr. Tiska?
So I'll continue the theme with the Fourth of July and just of course commend everyone who was doing their job, was paid to show up, but I think also just call attention to the level of volunteerism that we see on the Fourth of July, which really is, really represents what happens year round in Bristol and the level of volunteers in dozens of organizations, people putting forth their time to show their commitment to the community. So just want to make sure that we recognize all the volunteers as well, in addition, of course, the committee, but everyone that. of course, the Committee, but everyone that gave their time for something else, whether they're on a committee or not, just helping an individual find something on the parade route.
You mentioned Navy cadets and the people that gave their time, right? That's a great example.
Yeah, so anyone who's given time, all throughout the year, but particularly is represented within the Fourth of July. So thank you, everyone, for that.
Ms. Perrell?
Yes, a couple of things. So I will continue on the Fourth of July as well, and I-
It's a big deal.
Yeah, all of us will, I think. And to thank everyone for another wonderful and safe year. It's always a concern with a big event for a whole host of reasons. And so certainly to the Fourth of July Committee, the volunteers, police, fire, DPW, fire rescue, DPW, water pollution control, because of all those extra flushes that get in there. And I-
You're including everybody.
And I do want to say that it was very hot, and I, it certainly wasn't the hottest year that I think we've ever had, but it was among the hottest. And I think the, over the years that I've been involved in the, you know, in government and being in the parade of thinking back to years when rescue would be coming down the street and all, the parade had to move over to one side, to what we have now in terms of the carts and, and rescue personnel, you know, stationed throughout the route and the, behind Mount Carmel. And I don't even know that I realized you had the field hospital up at the station was particularly, you know, is such a great idea, and it's really come so far. I mean, we've really come a long, long, long way on that. And everybody was terrific. I stopped there and grabbed a water, even though I live, like, really, really close. And everybody was so, so helpful, and I think that you do a great job, all of you. I also want to commend my male colleagues who kept their jackets on the whole time. I mean, I don't know, one of these days, maybe they'll, they'll wear your shirt sleeves, I'm not sure, but you looked, you looked, you looked good, but, huh? Follows, yeah. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and I think we all probably want to send our sympathy to the President Farish's family and the students and faculty at Roger Williams and staff. That was a sudden and very sad loss. I think he did a terrific job at Roger Williams and really growing that university in terms of like its Providence campus and its community partnerships initiatives. I want to mention the Black Ships Festival that no one's mentioned that's coming this weekend, so I'm sure in the paper there'll be like a whole schedule, but the kickoff is Friday morning at 10:30, I believe, at Independence Park. And that is something that has been in Newport for many, many years. I've actually not gone to it there, but it's moving to Bristol, and there'll be different activities that celebrate the relationship between the United States and Japan going on all weekend. And also the Mount Carmel Festival, which is this weekend coming up, kicking off tomorrow night with Father Zino's lasagna and some of the special food items, and then going on the whole weekend with everything under the tent games and food and so forth. The final thing I want to mention is, because I haven't talked about it in a while, is the Pink Bag Initiative. And I'm bringing this up because there was a delay in, so if you recall back this whole initiative and we talked about it and approved it, it was contingent upon being able to have a, like a, like a transfer point or whatever you want to call it, a distribution center in Taunton. And that was supposed to open in April, and it got sidetracked and it, it was delayed until August. So that is opening in August, and so they'll be able to take on the new communities starting after that in September. I know they're doing a kickoff in, in North Providence in September. And so what I just need to do, I just, this all just happened today, and so I'm, I'm really happy that we get back on track for that event, so as soon as I hear some more information. But Lou, one of the things, and I didn't have a chance to email you or call you earlier, but I just wanted to, I thought that if you could just take a double, like a look, I thought that we had approved going forward with this-
You did, because I reviewed the contract.
Right, and that this, and the administrator could sign, correct?
You voted on it, yes.
Yes. So, because she had sent it to me and said, oh, you know, you guys need to take it back up. So I just think he, we can just sign it now, and I believe we authorized the administrator to just sign it. Am I right with that? Okay.
Because I made revisions that they accepted.
That's right, right, right. So that's where that is, and I will, yeah, I could forward you what, my email from her, but yeah, I was pretty sure that's what happened. And so if we can just double-check that, and then I will keep you posted on all of that. So hopefully, when people are digging out their, you know, fall clothes and putting away and want to do stuff, we can have our pink bags all over town. So, and that, I think, is my list. Thank you very much.
Mr. Stewart?
So when I say I'm going to have a watchful eye, I will definitely have a watchful eye next Fourth of July to see if the council will be in sport blazers. Because this might be the next year that, because I'm not here, and I'm the stubborn one, that you might be cool when you're walking.
Were you the culprit?
I'm the culprit. So happy, the Happy Fourth of July celebration is, once again, a success, and it takes in part, a lot of, like it has been said, all the volunteers, the Committee, the departments, our public safety just go above and beyond to make that yearly event just astounding. And also want to thank all the residents and the visitors who make it, you know, safe and abide by the rules and enjoy our town, because, and our doors are always open every other day other than Fourth of July, and we try to strive for that, to present that community to you. One thing I am excited about, and I said to the residents, it will take some time, but I was very happy to see, and I couldn't have done it without our harbor master Greg Marsili and his team to finally coordinate with those discussions in the past with Rhode Island DOT and the high-speed ferry. I will tell you that we brought over 400 people in that day on that ferry. And you just got to give it more time and patience. I don't know, I know my time is limited, but like I said, I'll still be involved, especially with initiatives like this. But talking with Greg, I know this council's working very hard on the new mariner expansion, which we already discussed, that the format with that mariner expansion is the platform for that ferry to be pulling up next to the Maritime Center, which will be more convenient than the landing it was in Fourth of July with the inlet of the harbor and the wake for, you know, boaters in that inlet. So I'm just glad that we're on the right track with it, and they're very interested in expanding the schedule. It's just going to take some time, so I was happy to see that. Also, the Rhode Island Department of Health, I just want to congratulate Emily Spence, Craig Pereira, and the Health Equity Zone for, again, a citation from the governor, for all our work here with the East Bay Recovery Center. They're going to even add hours in a day for those who need it here in Bristol, so just kudos to those efforts and everyone involved going forward with that, because it's much needed. Other than that, the Tanyard Brook has been mentioned, and we're just doing wonderful things, and we have a lot of events, so just pick and choose what you want to do. Thank you, Mike Davis, and our Sergeant in Arms, Archie Martins, everyone who came out tonight, and everyone tuning in at home. Thank you.
Town Administrator Agenda Items.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the Fourth of July also. It'd be appropriate to thank the Fire Chief and his personnel, volunteers, all the hard work they did. Chief, I didn't mention this to you, but when I stopped by at the, at your headquarters, I did notice a great number of improvements at the, with the program and the, the equipment that's being brought in from federal and the state. And it's nice to see that we're building and, and progressing every year. Also Recreation, thank you. DPW did a phenomenal job. And especially the Fourth of July Committee, which dedicated and volunteered their time. Thank you to all of you. Tanyard Brook was mentioned. Friday, we did the groundbreaking. It was nice, it was nice to see a few of the neighbors there also. Hopefully, they'll be a little more reassured in the future. And some good news, as we all know, we're leveraging our, our own funds with grants, and we're doing really well there. There's an additional grant we got recently for the State Street Reservoir, which is part of Tanyard Brook. I think that was, how much was that? $199,000. So we're going to keep rolling. The, the boardwalk extension behind the Everett's Fire Station that's moving along, the piles will be, we'll start driving those in early next week. You may even see them there on Friday. And we talked about a lot of the events in town. There's one that you did forget, and that's the Fireman's muster in a water battle that's Sunday. But Mount Carmel Feast this weekend, the-
The Heid.
The Heid is coming up, yeah, 175-year anniversary. Lou, that's one of the oldest fire companies in the country, isn't it?
Oldest and continuous service.
Oldest and continuous, yeah.
Amazing.
I think that's all I have.
Before you adjourn, I do have one thing. Oh, yes, of course. If I may, just, there was a lot of talk this evening about volunteerism, and those of us that were, were lucky enough to be able to sit there and, and hear the great patriotic address by Dick DeVault was particularly special, and its focus was volunteerism. And I thought it was a little ironic that all of our great volunteers were not able to be there to actually hear the speech.
Because they were volunteering?
Exactly. They were volunteering elsewhere. So at my, on your behalf, at my request, Mr. DeVault did provide a copy, which is part of the permanent council record.
Oh, nice.
And we'll be happy to make it available to anybody that'd like to read it.
Excellent, nice job.
Okay. It's actually item on this agenda, HH-18, so it's actually part of your-
Yeah, no. All right. Thank you. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.